Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 8th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And if you're not familiar with how we conduct our business, agendas were available on the table outside the chamber. On the back of the face page is a little information on how we conduct the meetings. If you are not the applicant and you wish to address us on a case, there are signup sheets, little sheets about this big on the table outside, and if you would complete that and indicate the case that you wish to address us on, we will be happy to hear you. Russell, first order of business is approval of the minutes.
You approve.
Okay. I have to stay. Motion is second to approve the minutes of the August 11th meeting. Commissioners Bright and I were not present, so we will not be voting.
If the rest of you vote.
The rest of you are here, so cast your votes, and five votes approves the minutes. I see many of you found the signup sheets. I'm glad to see that. Many, many found it. Next on the agenda is continuance requests.
We have two uncontested requests for continuance. Item 36, which is PUD 1443, continued to September 22nd. An item 37, which is an ordinance for introduction, has been referred back to staff.
Did anyone come to talk to us about either of those items today, 36 or 37 on our agenda? Sorry, sir?
We should inform that item 31 may continue also.
We'll get to that in a minute, and I'll address your concern.
36 and 37, I move to continue.
Second, you have a motion and second to continue items 36 and 37. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
We have a number of new requests for continuance. Item 8, SP 440, request to continue until September 22nd. Item 18, PUD 1442, request to continue until September 22nd. Item 19, SPUD 623, request to continue until October 27th. Item 25, PC 10279, request to continue until September 22nd. Item 27 has been withdrawn, that's PC 10282. Item 29 is C 6299, request to continue until September 22nd. Item 31, which is to continue till September 22nd, that is C 6298. Item 32, C 6303, has been withdrawn. And item 33, which is C 6302, request to continue until September 22nd.
So if you want to make your way up to the microphone, item 31 will hear you. Not from there, microphone. Before he speaks, did anyone come to address us on any of the other items that were just listed, 8, 18, 19, 25, 27, 29, 32, or 33? I skipped out on purpose because this gentleman wants to address us. I'd like to vote on those and then hear this gentleman, if we may.
Yeah, my name is Ken Sonner, and I have no objection to the continuance.
Oh, okay. Does anyone else object to the continuance of item 31? All right, that's easy.
Why don't you say so?
I move.
Additional continuance, second.
Okay. Motion is second to approve the additional continuances. Cast your votes. Are there any other continuance requests from the public today? Okay, thank you. We'll go to the consent docket then.
There are five items on the consent docket today. Item 1 is C 6304. Item 2, PV 080. Item 3, C 5814. Item 4, C 5106. And item 5, which is a PUD from the Oklahoma Health Center, south.
Again, has anyone come here today to address us on items 1 through 5 on our agenda?
Move the consent.
Second, they have a motion and second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes, and that is approved.
On items requiring separate vote, item 6 is SPUD 616, application by the William L. Smith Family Limited Partnership to rezone 3724 West Park Place from SPUD 414 to SPUD 616, Ward 3.
Mr. Smith, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Ken Smith with Smith Farm &amp; Garden. The address is 3733 Northwest 10th Street. Smith Farm &amp; Garden currently has two exits onto North QuoPaw from our parking lot. Our customers are able to leave our parking lot, enter QuoPaw, and they can go north into the residential area, or they can go south back to Northwest 10th Street. What we are proposing is a new drive and a new exit on the North QuoPaw to handle the pickups with trailers that are coming to our business. We are, with this, we will be forcing those pickups with trailers south back to Northwest 10th Street instead of giving them the option to go north into the residences like they now On the drawing that we submitted to you, you notice that the drive is angled to the south. Also, we have a no-left turn sign on the pavement. We have, I mean, we have a left turn sign painted on the pavement, no right-hand sign. And we also have a large boulder on the north corner of this exit so that these pickups with trailers will have a very difficult time to navigate that turn and go to the north. What this is going to do, it's going to eliminate the traffic problems that we're having in our parking lot, and also it is going to eliminate a lot of the commercial traffic that is going north. Also, we are going to erect a six-foot site-proof fence around the property. We are going to put a sidewalk along Park Place north of that fence. We are also going to plant nine three-inch trees in the greenbelt north of that fence. And we're also going to retain all the mature oaks, pecans, and sycamore trees on the property. These improvements will beautify the neighborhood, and it will also reduce the amount of commercial traffic that is going into that neighborhood. And we request that you approve SPUD 616 as presented.
Okay. Can you give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Raymond Wayne Scott. I live at 3717 West Park Place. I have two things that I'm concerned about. Number one, I want to make sure that the buildings have been taken off of this and they're not left in there as blanketly approved so that he can do anything he wants when he goes to erect them, because he had them in the beginning. I know you addressed that last time, but I wasn't clear as to whether they've been taken out off this or not. The other one is still that entrance off on QuoPaw, making sure none of those can turn and head north, none of his commercial traffic. Where was his boulders on that drawing? I didn't get to see it that well.
Well, I think he's got it right on the north side of that drive.
Well, I know when he was talking to us, he was talking about putting in a 20-foot drive and a 30-foot gate. I noticed he's proposing a 20-foot gate opening now, which is better because that does restrict it more. I think the boulders, though, as far as stopping them from turning and heading north, you would need some up on that south side also, because that's why they're going to jump that curb and just go ahead and go around. They have no problems jumping curbs. I've seen them.
Well, if they pull a trailer across the north side of that drive, the way it's laid out, it's going to pull the trailer right over the boulder. And there's no way we can absolutely guarantee that no one is ever going to make a turn and go north. There's just, you know, you can put all the signs and all the arrows on the pavement that you want.
What would be the...
But we have to be reasonable, too.
Yeah. What would be the possibility of y'all's suggestion to the city that you make that one block a one-way south, and that would stop any traffic going north and thereby solve that problem with the park and children?
That may solve the problem for that one block, but then you've got people who normally, who live north of that on QuoPaw and probably use that to go home. I mean, we need to think about what traffic impact that would have on an area much greater than just this one block. That would be a traffic commission issue in any case and not ours. But I mean, I could see that discussion starting up right away. Now, I wasn't here for the last meeting, but was there any discussion about the building or the potential expansion? I see it's something still on the plan. Well, that's what I, I mean, my question is, what's your objection to a building?
The buildings, he has not submitted any plans for or the purpose of them, and he was talking about making some of those buildings, wanting to make them repair shops and machine shops and stuff, which would bring noise over into our, closer into our area. And that's our objection there. We don't want the noise from those. We don't want him putting buildings back there on the lots into the residential area where it will increase the noise of a morning and stuff and disturb the neighborhood.
Just like you, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't here either. So, you know, was any discussion made of a building last meeting? I don't know.
Well, there was a little, but I think that one thing we need to realize is that there is currently a spud existing on this property.
And it's C 3.
And it's C 3. The spud he's proposing is much more restrictive than what we have right now. And if he does at any point decide to put a building in, which he could, it'll have to meet all the requirements, all the architectural requirements and, you know, and the uses that are included in this spud. So, at least in my opinion, what he's proposing is better than what you have right now, okay? Someone could, he could build a building there right now.
Last I read, the spud before, it was very, very limited, the spud 414.
Not as limited as the one he's proposing. If you go back and look at it, it has much more uses that are included in that spud than are on the one that he's proposing now.
In addition to that, Mr. Chairman, we've heard this a couple of times now, and we've given Mr. Smith some pretty direct marching orders.
He's met them.
And he has, he has met them, exactly. He has done what we've asked him to do. It's addressed those concerns. Commissioner Irwin's point is well-taken. In SPUD, it tells, talks about building orientation in the SPUD. Advocate's done everything we've asked him to do.
Well, I know the spud prior restricted him from having any access from that property to QuoPaw or to Park Place also, which would have restricted that and solved that problem.
Okay, Commissioner's action?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I echo what Nick said at our last meeting. We kind of went through this application real thorough. We boiled it down to these items that we asked him to address, and that was with the presence of the protester. And he has come back and, to my observation, has satisfied everything that we asked him to do, and I recommend that we approve the application based on...
One second. To answer the other question, no one else has signed up. So we have a motion and second to approve item 6. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7 is SPUD 626, an application by AT&amp;T to rezone 3212 Northwest 48th Street from PUD 307 to SPUD 626 in Ward 2.
Is the applicant here?
My name is Mark Kessner. I'm with CLB Companies LLC. My address is 403 Windsor Road, but actually falls in Midwest City. You can see on this site, Phil, we'll go ahead and move into the PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to speak real quickly since I've got three of these in a row, kind of an overview of what we have, and then I'll speak more specifically to this site. In the Oklahoma City Metro, AT&amp;T as a company has seen a 3,000 percent increase in their data and voice traffic in 18 months, in the last year and a half. And if you have an AT&amp;T phone, that's pretty apparent. They're beginning to struggle to carry calls, to make calls, to move data. Same things that we've seen in San Francisco, Dallas, New York for many years. We now see that here. As a company, there are two reasons that AT&amp;T has to fix that. One, you're mandated with your FCC license to provide service to X amount of people, to a percentage, or they yank your license. Hasn't happened to AT&amp;T anywhere. It's happened to smaller companies. That's the first, you know, legal reason we have to do it. The second one is, if you continue to have poor call quality, people say, well, hey, I'm going to switch. I'm going to go to Verizon. I'm going to go to somebody else's Sprint, because AT&amp;T is not carrying that. And so as a result, we have to have more sites. The other thing you will see is LTE, because I've heard talk about the fourth generation, which AT&amp;T is bringing here, that will offload a lot of that data, but there's no way to move 3,000 percent of traffic without building new sites. You can imagine if as a city, we had to build, we had a 3,000 percent increase in road traffic, the problems it would cause, or a 3,000 percent increase in water usage or electricity. In a lot of ways, the telecommunications industry is a key, key part of infrastructure, and we have to be able to keep up. An example of that, I've done all of AT&amp;T sites here in Oklahoma for the last three or four years, and you guys have not seen, we haven't been in at all. In 2009, we did eight sites in the Oklahoma City Metro. None of them came in here before the board. They met all the conditions. And in 2010, we had 17 sites. None of them came in here before. This year, we have 67 within the metro. We have 67 new sites. So it doesn't mean a new tower, that means a new location. We have to go on someone else's tower or building, or if none of those exist, we build a new one. And of those 67, there are only four or five that we don't meet every single, all 16 conditions that are within the Oklahoma City Planning Code. I say four or five because the one we pulled off today, I'll explain a little more later, but we are still, you know, after nine months, working to not have to come in before the board. The reason for that is AT&amp;T's stance overall in Oklahoma. I've worked with many carriers. Some carriers will say, hey, this is where we want our tower. We don't want to co-locate. Go through zoning, go get it. AT&amp;T's stance in this market is, we will co-locate no matter what. We will not build a new site. We will co-locate. If you can prove that we can't co-locate, then build us a site that doesn't have to go through the zoning process. If you can't, they re-review it again and go, it starts all the way back over, making us prove, hey, to build a new site, because of a variety of reasons. One, the cost of building a new site is prohibitive. But two, it slows the process down, and it's generally viewed negatively by the community when you have to go through the zoning process. The sites that we're working now, the 67 are what we call capacity sites, that offload all that data traffic, and by nature, they make my job much, much more difficult, because they're the ones where there are a lot of people, a lot of people using phones, a lot of people using the Internet, iPad, iPhone, everything. So there's a lot, generally, property values are much higher, and everything is packed in much more densely. And so in order to meet all these requirements, it's much more difficult. Again, out of those 67, more than 60 of them, we meet it. We have no problem. And I think what we're going to try to demonstrate here today is, out of those other four, we're presenting a very reasonable request that meets either all of the requirements or, in one case, all but one, and we'll explain why we don't meet that. The first site, I'll go ahead and give you an overview of what we do, but we start with the skip process, is where the engineer tells us, this is where I need a site. This is where we have problems. We go out and we provide candidates. We use the Oklahoma City zoning code. That is our, the first thing we use, is, hey, can we meet these 15? Any site in this network, is there already a tower there? Is there a building we can go on? When we turn it in, again, if it doesn't, we have to provide a co-location opportunity. We have to provide any raw land that meets the requirements, and if there are none of those, then you'll see a site that doesn't meet the requirements. If it's, if it's a raw land, it's immediately rejected for a re-review. We go out with the engineer, we drive around, we show them, we relook at it with two or three other sets of eyes, we submit it again. If it's still the same candidate or similar candidate, it goes through another review process. At the culmination of that, when we say, hey, we've exhausted everything, and I think we'll show that today on these, then we'll come before the board and say, hey, this is what we can present to, you know, to fix our network and to improve it. The first site is 1822 Baptist. Can you go back to that one? I'll go ahead and look at that from the outside. This is the Northwest Expressway and 74 interchange. This is 44 across here. We have a site existing right here. We made it really short at the time to meet the zoning requirements.
Do you want that?
This is 44, correct? That's right, isn't it? I believe so. And we have a site here on this side of 44. We've got a site right out here, again, another shortage hour to meet setbacks. We have a site, kind of hard to see, right up here Northwest Expressway that's on a rooftop. We've got a site over here that's on a rooftop. So those are existing sites. As you can see, when you infill, you have to go somewhere within those, and you've got to stay away from those. When you're too close, you get, you know, interference. Your phone doesn't know where to go. So that's why, that's the whole concept behind cellular, is it sells, and you want to keep them, you know, an equidistant amount as best you can. So the area that was identified is right in here in the center. As you can see, this is mostly residential. The highways take up another very large portion of it. We can't go any further up than this, you know, where the hospitals are, because we're too close to this site. Over here, we're too close, there's an existing tower right here that we proposed, it's too close to the rooftop that we're on there. Down here, again, we have sites on the outsides of this neighborhood. Can you go to the next one? The search ring, again, that's our target. So they give me a quarter mile and say, hey, we've got to find something in here, or we will continue to drop calls all along 44 and all along this highway, and you'll see that, you see on the propagation maps, it'll continue to worsen within this neighborhood. These are, you know, our original, we turned in a rooftop, we turned in another rooftop, we turned in this existing tower, and we told, you know, our group, hey, we can't meet setbacks, we need to do this. So they rejected it, said, hey, those won't work, those two buildings are unviable, they're too close, this tower is too close to our 1059 site. We went back, went through everything again. We discussed with the Orthopedic Associates, which was one where we wouldn't have had, you know, I don't think quite the concern with people, because, you know, mostly, we would have a site along the highway. They were not interested, they wanted to keep that space separate for expansion. We talked to the mosque that's located there, right north of the Mayfair Center. They were not interested, as they have planned expansions as well, within the, the only area that we could have met it. They said, hey, you can put it out here, but we don't want to put it next to a house. The, all the other properties along here are residential. Everything's residential. There's almost nothing we can meet. So we approached, you know, a proposed site at the Mayfair Center, we moved to the next site. Within this site, it's a five acre, it's already a PUD. There are, again, there are, there are 16 requirements. The first requirement is that you're allowed use. That's allowed in, you know, almost all of Oklahoma City's zoning districts. A tower's not allowed use, office, commercial, just about everywhere. You can't go put one in residential unless you meet really specific requirements, and some specific districts like Bricktown don't allow them at all. On this one, the other 15 requirements, we met all of them. How far are you from the property line? Are you this height, you know, are you this far from a, from a use, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? We meet all of those, but this property is a PUD. Within the telecom ordinance, you're allowed to go in a PUD unless the PUD is too specific. This PUD is designed as an underlay of office. If this were zoned office, we could put the tower in, no problem. But it's not zoned office, it's a, it's an old PUD from 1987, and so the requirement means now we have to come in and change that, as you guys are well familiar, I'm sure, into an SPUD allowing it. You know, ideally for the landlord, hey, he would have rather us had it out here. We wouldn't put it out there in a parking lot, because again, we're going to be too close to all these residences. We didn't want to deal with that. We wanted to continue to meet our setbacks. This is the Mayfair Center, as you can see. This is the building. Here's this parking. And so what we proposed, he's got two storage sheds in here, is we said, hey, we'll remove one of your sheds, one of the old ones, we'll put our equipment building there, we'll put a tower here, we'll fence it all off, and we'll pay to remove the old shed that's next to it with a brand-new shed for him to store his stuff, and we paid to lease the space. The landlord has been really amenable to us, and he said, hey, you know, the, the usage of this as a nonprofit, he has a difficult time keeping it up. He said, hey, I want to make some changes. He's fairly a new owner. I want to bring some nicer things in for the people who are using this. This tower's a great way for me to make an income that I can use to upgrade the facility. We went through, again, the tower's right in there. Can you go to the next slide? These are our propagation maps. This is how the current, the current traffic exists. Green is good, blue is really pretty good. Anything you see, yellow is marginal, it's going to depend on the time of day, the data traffic. Red is going to be poor most of the time, maybe in the evening, you'll see better when there's less traffic. These areas here, you really want to see this, see how these two cells are pretty close together? That hands the call off. Where you have problems like this one and this, you're going to see quite a few dropped calls when there's high capacity. This is the area of the actual neighborhood that we're worried about in your future growth, we're going to have to have a capacity. As I think everybody knows, most 911 calls are now made from cell phones, and it is important to be able to at least make a call. You can see here, if we go at this site, we no longer have any problem with our handoffs, and within the community, it's significantly improved. I'll kind of defer to you guys on the next point. I read the protests, as you guys probably did as well, and the accompanying documents. If you guys are familiar with the health aspects, you know, in those areas, I won't speak to them. I can, I don't mind, I've done it, I do it many times. I just haven't been in here, like I said, you know, ever. So that's kind of, if you guys want me... I used to be a physics teacher and a biology teacher, so I like to explain the health aspect of it. Should I continue?
On the health aspects?
Yes, sir.
No, not yet.
Okay.
I assume these are all Verizon customers who've signed up in protest? But you're right, whenever you come before us with one of these proposals, a lot of folks in the community don't like it, and we're going to hear from some of them right now. Don't talk to us from back there. If you've signed up, you can come to the microphone, and you'll get, you'll get your turn. What I'm going to ask is that since a number of you have signed up on this particular item, that if your comments have already been made by one of your neighbors, if you have something new to add, we'd be real pleased to hear from you. Otherwise, we'd like to just hear the issues once. And I'm going to just take them in the order in which they were given to me. I will ask each of you to limit your comments to about three minutes if you can, and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Christine Garlets, and...
Might pull the microphone down. Thank you.
My name is Christine Garlets, and I live at 3127 Northwest 48th Street in Oklahoma City. I'm kind of representing us as a community group, and you'll hear from other people here, too, but one of our first concerns is that the tower is within 300 feet of some of the residents. We measured this morning, and a resident at 3145 Northwest 48th Street is within 137 feet from the proposed tower. Another residence, 4805 Hamilton, is within 169 feet from the tower. And radiation levels at that distance are, could be quite dangerous, and so that needs to be considered. There's a city ordinance number 59-8300.30, states that no towers may be placed within 300 feet of a residential area. So that's something that needs to be considered. And do you all have any documentation of that here, of the city ordinance?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So that's our very first concern. And then we also have other concerns. We have health concerns. There are multiple studies being done that are inconclusive. We don't have information saying if health concerns are valid or if they're not valid. We don't know if the radiation is going to be dangerous or if it is not dangerous. There are still studies being done, and more time is needed to research these things and see what the evidence shows. There are numerous elderly people and children and people within these homes. The elderly especially, their immune systems are already compromised, and in the Mayfair Building itself, there is a group of people that will be there for daily care, and they're all elderly, so their immune systems are automatically compromised. compromised. That's a consideration that we would like you all to consider. Um, there are also environmental concerns and the aesthetics of the community. Um, we're, we're very concerned that, um, this, this tower will really bring down the aesthetic quality of the community. It's, it's very big, it's very large. Um, the property itself has several trees and flowering bushes, there's a gazebo. Um, it's a beautiful piece of land, and it's used by the community. We see it every day as we drive to work and we drive to school. Um, and so that could potentially, um, bring down property values as well because of the aesthetics and the, um, the aspects of how that would change the aesthetics. Uh, in New York City, property values are reportedly, uh, decreased at least twenty-five percent whenever a cellphone tower's placed, um, near residents. Um, so these are, in short, our concerns. Um, so we're asking for a temporary moratorium to be considered, um, to allow us more time to research these concerns and also to hire, uh, legal help, um, as needed.
Okay. Does this, is there any questions of Ms. Garlets? Thank you. Uh, Joshua Holman? And forgive me in advance if I mispronounce any names.
Did very good.
Give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Name is Joshua Holman. I live at seven-two-one-two Pheasant Cove in northwest part of Oklahoma City. Also attend church in this area. Um, and, uh, have a few concerns wanted to bring up about the situation. Uh, first was also, uh, issues with the restrictions on the sites for cellphone towers. Um, we don't have accurate information on the actual construction of this tower. Um, there are other concerns such as, uh, regulations as far as how many poles can be on the tower, um, that actually increases the distance requirements with the residential homes within the area depending on the construction of the tower. I have a few questions for, uh, some other questions as well for the AT&T representative. Is it possible to ask some questions?
You might sit down next to him and ask him the questions.
Okay. Let me, uh, try to get some information from him then after I cover a couple of points.
That'd be fine. And if you have questions still, you may come back.
Okay. Uh, did a little bit of research on what are the requirements with, uh, towers being controlled by the Telecommunications Act. And I understand that, uh, for city councils to make a decision on this, uh, they have to have substantial evidence, and that is a requirement. And, uh, so, again, echoing the need for a timeframe in order to work on this would be very important. Um, also, um, the only other reasons why federal courts would overturn a city council decision are, are related to, uh, coverage areas, uh, because their, their purpose is to cover more areas. Uh, but cases have held that, um, that as long as there is actual coverage in the area, uh, that a city council can make its choices based on other health and environmental concerns as long as it's not keeping that carrier from at least covering that area and competing with their competitors, and as long as, uh, it, it's not, um, effectively prohibiting them from covering that area. Uh, obviously, they still have coverage there, it's all in the secondary collar range there. Um, I happen to be an AT&T customer, and I get fine coverage there. Um, in fact, uh, right around the area where they had the red mark was, is where my church is at, and, uh, no problems. So, um, also, the, uh, the city code also in fifty-nine dash eighty-three hundred dash point three zero discusses, um, what types of land that, uh, or, or basically, it discusses borders there, and I'm pretty much reading a presumption that you do not put cellphone towers around residential, uh, areas. It doesn't explicitly say it, but the presumption seems very clear to me from the language, and, uh, and then again, the three hundred feet, so...
The setback is for a reason, which is fall radius of tall towers principally, but...
Um, are there any questions for me?
Well, if you wanna talk to the gentleman there, we'll come back to you. Karen Garlets, please. Looks like we have the whole family signed up.
Yes, sir, you do.
Uh, my name is Karen Garlets. I live at thirty-one twenty-seven Northwest Forty-eighth Street in Oklahoma City, and, um, I am opposing the cellphone tower. Um, my sister Christine basically spoke what I wanted to say, but, um, I would like to, again, request a moratorium. We need to do more, um, research on the, uh, radiation coming from the cellphone towers and how it will affect the residents who stay at the center during the day. My sister, um, talked about the daily living center. There's also an after-school program for children, and I'm concerned as to how the radiation's going to affect them if they're outside. Um, the, the tower will be placed on a beautiful piece of land, and I have seen children out in the parking lot and in the grounds playing together, and, um, I'm very concerned that them being affected by that because, as children, they need to be in an area where they can, uh, play outside in a place that is not hindered by electronic devices, so that's what I would like to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume Jenna is another sister?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, Alan? Lance? Can you help this gentleman get a microphone or get the microphone down to him so we can hear? Or maybe this one'll work? Either way. Mr. Garlets, if you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Alan Garlets, and I live at thirty-one twenty-seven Northwest Forty-eighth Street also. I'd like to give you just a short, um, background. Thirty-three years ago, I came to the city of Oklahoma City from New York to become a police officer here in Oklahoma City. It was my desire to serve this community. I was diagnosed with muscular dystrophy, and as a result, I was not able to maintain my police officer career. However, I did work in communications for the next twenty-two years. I'm familiar with this area. This area was my district, and I bought that house specifically in that area because low crime rate, because of the neighborhood aesthetics, and because of what it was. Regarding the Mayfair Center, when the school closed, it was proposed that that, um, that area was to be, um, set up to be a daily living center to, um, house nonprofits, social service organizations, and aid adult daycare facility, and, um, congregant meals on wheels, so on and so forth. And all those regulations have, are in place right now. Everything's there. It was never designed for any profit in any way, shape, or form, any, any business for profit. Um, when the gentleman from AT&T was speaking earlier, um, about where other cellphone towers are, when he said that, um, he made the statement that they checked with, um, orthopedic associates, there are businesses, there are, there are, the entire Northwest Sixty-seventh Street from Portland all the way over to Baptist Hospital is nothing but businesses and large buildings with towers on top of them. There should be no reason why they can't, they can't move that tower to that location. I am a Verizon customer, but I don't have any problems getting any, any cellphone calls. So if Verizon isn't having any problems, why can't they move some of their towers? Or why can't they move some of their antennas to towers that other companies are already using where people aren't having a problem? He already said that that's where they go first. Well, if they go there first, and I'm not having any problem in that neighborhood, why can't they look into where other companies are, are, have already placed their towers and move their items there? Um, again, uh, an adult daily living center, elderly people, people with autoimmune diseases, I have muscular dystrophy, I have an autoimmune disease. I'm very concerned about what this is gonna do to my health and the health of the people that are living there or, or staying there as daily living center. There's no, there's no, um, hardcore evidence stating that it will cause a problem, but there are a lot of medications that, that my doctors try to get me to take that say, well, you know, we don't think that this is gonna cause you a problem. One of the side effects is, well, you, it weakens your immune, it weakens your muscle tissue. I'm not willing to take that, um, that chance in weakening my muscles because I already have muscles that, I mean, they don't work anyhow. So why would I want to put myself in the jeopardy of a place that possibly could affect my health? We purchased that house back in nineteen eighty. We added on to the house fifteen years ago by a contractor who didn't do his job right, and I'm now spending, we've been out of that house for now two months, trying to get it rebuilt because we love that neighborhood and we love that area. We don't wanna have to move. Our neighbors don't want us to have to move. We have a great place. He stated, uh, the AT&T representative said that normally these towers are looked on, looked at as negative by the community. That should tell the people of, that you all, something right there, that if the communities in general look at these as a negative aspect, why would we wanna put them close to a community when we do have other locations that can be, that, that they can use? Um, AT&T is also not concerned or in consideration for their license at this point. He said that if they don't provide X number of service to X number of people in the community, then they could be jeopardizing their license by AT&T. He stated, that is not the case here. All they're just trying to do is just trying to make a few more people happy. They're not trying to maintain or hold on to their license, and if they don't get this tower, they are not in jeopardy of losing their license. So this is just really not that important to them. It's just something that they wanna do because they could get that property, and hopefully that they could get other cellphone companies to buy on to their tower so that they won't have to expend as much money to the landowner as they are now, so that they can split those costs, or at least that's my opinion. I don't have any basis to fact that, back that up. Um, and again, as my daughter stated, they are well with, they are not within the regulations of placing the cellphone tower within, uh, three hundred feet of any residential house. I'm sure I could say something else, but that's probably enough for right now. But if you decide that we have not provided enough evidence to actually stop this from occurring, then we beg that you allow us enough time to do enough studies. When we went around our neighborhood and canvassed, there were fifteen people in our neighborhood that knew about this. And they might've sent out all the, the right cards, and they might've notified the people, but no one in our neighborhood knew about this. Reason a lot of the people are here today is because we went, we went door-to-door and said, do you have any idea what's going on? And because we did receive a letter, a lot of these people did not receive a letter. They have no idea. Some of them are so elderly, I, I mean, Mayfair is sixty years old, the, the community itself, and many of the people in our neighborhood are too elderly to come down here and even dispute this. So we're not only speaking on our behalf, but we're speaking on the behalf of our neighbors. Give us a chance, if you're not going to shut this down right now, to notify our neighbors, give us, or, or put it out somehow so that everyone in that general vicinity knows what's going on, so everyone can express their views to you, not just our family and not just our, our neighbors in and around us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Lance, if you'll get the microphone? John Ford?
My name is John Ford. I live at thirty-three twenty-six Northwest Forty-fifth Terrace in Oklahoma City, which is about a block and a half, two blocks from the Mayfair Center. I'm the current president of the, of the Mayfair Citizen, Mayfair West Citizens Patrol, and since nineteen ninety-five have been president of the association or the patrol or both. And I was the executive director of the Mayfair Center for eleven years, uh, until about five years ago. Um, then things changed there. About five years ago, we received a grant from the Oklahoma City Community Foundation, Margaret Ann Estes Boys Trust Fund, and we, I believe the grant was for five thousand dollars. And we planted trees. I plant, personally planted the trees and the bushes for that whole thing on that five acres. I built the gazebo except doing the roofing. Um, so for the last, what, seventeen years, I've been involved in beautification and working, uh, with the, the neighborhood. Uh, actually, we have three officers here from that organization, which is now the only community organization organized in that area. So we have contact with, and we could've had a lot more people here, but, but we figured you probably had enough here. Um, so, you know, we're real concerned. I live two blocks away, and, uh, if I were to ask anybody there, uh, if they're gonna put a big tower in right down the street from your house, or, or are you gonna buy a house, would you buy one there? Uh, and I think probably you would not want to do that. And then if you add that, well, it has, it's a microwave tower or, or has radiation involved, uh, and we don't know if that's gonna hurt anybody, uh, you probably would not want to do that. Under this proposed tower, uh, at present, there are children, uh, that come for a program of one of the people that leased space in that building. Uh, in the past, since nineteen eighty-seven, there were, was a daycare center there, they are not there now, but it is, it is zoned for that. Uh, but, of course, those things can happen. I just ask that you, uh, hear the evidence that has been put forth today, uh, perhaps grant us more time or turn this down. Our neighborhood does not need another large towering device. We have those things all around us. I am an AT&T customer, I have no cellphone problems. I, I've never dropped calls, I don't think, from my house, and so I appreciate you hearing us today.
Thank you. Walter Goddard?
My name is Walter Goddard, and I'm at forty-eight oh-five North Independence Avenue, directly across the street from this activity. And, uh, it will be within about a hundred and fifty feet at the most in front of my, my front door, just across the street, right looking straight into it. And, uh, everyone else is probably issued, I mean, submitted just pretty about what I had in, to, uh, mind to say, but I just feel like that you added traffic, heavy traffic, and that, and I know from personal experience, we have a cell tower on our church property just mile, less than a mile away from, from this activ, this location. And I know the heavy traffic that comes in there, I mean, talking about heavy equipment that comes in and out servicing this, uh, that, that particular product. And I'm sure that the same thing will happen with the AT&T. And, uh, we have, already have terrific, terrific traffic problem on Northwest, uh, North Independence Avenue, which is, it's a, it's a narrow, it's a two-lane street, and it has a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. But that is not the, the traffic has never traveled at that speed more than, well, I'd say that fifty or sixty percent of it runs thirty-five miles an hour or more above. So there's gonna be a certain amount of those activities going on with this activity, with this project going on in this particular spot. And I just feel like that we need, it would be, uh, helpful if we could not add to that any more than what it already is. And I've lived in that house for fifty, a little over fifty years now. I, I bought it in nineteen sixty. I bought it in 1960. So I'm 85 years old and I'm not ready to, I don't want to have to relocate. And so I would like your consideration about adding anything that would lower the value of the property around the area and create any more activity than what we already have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Shane, and I'm not going to try and pronounce your last name, I can't get the letters.
My name is Shane Oats. I live at 3131 Northwest 48th Street. My main concern is having no sympathy for AT&amp;T as they're a giant corporation. They could put their tower just about anywhere, including in that circle, right behind the rooftop unavailable sign, there's an entire lot that's another six acres that's completely vacant, has been for sale for at least five years, that they could have no problems going to right over there. They don't need to put a tower right in the middle of a neighborhood. I understand the mosque bought Mayfair Center not too long ago, which he brought up, the currently newer owners of it. If the mosque wanted a tower that bad, they could put the tower in the parking lot the mosque has right next to it, which has no houses around it. It doesn't need to go on the center of the building that's been there for 60 years. AT&amp;T, I personally have, I regret having AT&amp;T, but I have them, never had a single problem where I'm at, and I understand I need to reach a wider audience or customers, however you look at it, but there's plenty of options with no houses around whatsoever. I think that if they could meet all 16 of the requirements, then I understand that we as a community probably have no option as these things were set forth by city councilmen such as yourself a long time ago. And if they meet those requirements, then we'll have to suck it up like everything else. But I don't feel sorry for a corporation who wants to just put it where it's most convenient or cheaper or anything else for them, when there's plenty of other viable options.
Okay, thank you. Skylar Greiner Hayes.
My name is Skylar Greiner Hayes and I live at 3207 Northwest 47th Street. This property is in my, my backyard backs up to the property. So essentially, if they put a cellphone tower, I would do my dishes and look at it every day. In addition to everything that everyone else has said, I would like to really emphasize the property value aspects of this. I have a list of several studies or examples or like evidence-based articles discussing how a cellphone tower does decrease the, the property value and the proximity, the closer that the property is to the tower, the more of a hit that the property takes. And I'd like to just kind of discuss some numbers, just a hypothetical. From what I've read, the average decrease of property is about 20% with the property close to a cellphone tower. So I went and counted how many houses would have direct viewings or extreme proximity to this cellphone tower and I counted 28 houses. So if you take an underestimate of $120,000 per house and you take 20% of that, that's $588,000 that this community would take as a hit. So that's also taxpayer money too. So I think that in considering this decision, I mean, there's, I'm a new homeowner, I need the equity in my home. And this is a beautiful neighborhood, this is a beautiful piece of property and to put up a cellphone tower that's an eyesore and that could just kind of bring down the, the neighborhood that we're working, really trying, working really hard to preserve is just, it's, and I also want to point out that I looked in, at a map that had all the cellphone towers throughout the city and I didn't see any that were this encompassed by residential area. There are houses all around that property and all around that part of the property. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
That's fine, take your time.
But I just, I asked for more time. I will do everything I can to, I just found out about this like a week or a few days ago, but I will work with my neighborhood to really, really fight this tower. There is so much industrial, or I mean, sorry, commercial property and so many buildings around that I think could be, could be used by AT&amp;T. And also, it just, in the terminology that I, that they represented from AT&amp;T used, he said, "I had to find a place in here and this was it." No regard for the fact that people live there, that people have money invested in that property, that there are potential or inconclusive evidence on, on health risks. So I, I just asked for more time or for you to, to not let this happen to our neighborhood. And I think that, and I just want to emphasize, I agree completely with everything that my neighbors have said.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler. Did you answer Mr. Holman's questions?
I can go through and answer them all. You guys can see why my hair is gray already. It's, this is not an easy job. I'll go through and, and address some of these. That was really good, by the way. The last one was as well, I mean, they all were, but that one was particularly good, I thought. The first issue, you know, that, that I'll deal with is the 300 feet, which I guess came up a couple of times. I'm explicitly familiar with our ordinance, as I'm sure many of you guys are as well. That applies if you're on a residential property. So if I have a residential property and I want to put a tower on it, then I need to be 300 feet. Well, we're not on a residential property, we're in a PUD. And that's the whole reason we're in here, is for that PUD. Again, if this was zoned office, as what the underlying zoning for PUD is, there would be no meeting, tower would go up. And so I think that the fact that it was done with pretty specific uses is why we're here, and that was a good background for it. Some of the others, I think the real estate, which she mentioned, is probably the most pertinent issue, because I think everyone here would agree that the, the health, not only can you guys not consider it, but as I, I want so badly to move to those slides, as I'll show, it's, it's a non-factor. In regards to real estate, what we've seen everywhere is that it doesn't affect commercial property. What they've said is correct, that on a residential property, if you put it next to someone's residence, it will affect it, like the New York statistic, 20%. Next to means, if you've got a house and I go and I raise the house next to it and put a cell tower, it is going to affect you, affect you. And that's part of the reason that when you make an ordinance such as the Oklahoma City did, you keep that in, in regards. That's why we have the setbacks and the distances from each property, so that someone can't come into a neighborhood and put a tower right adjacent to your property. If you can go, can you go to the site plan again? I think it's back, no, it's forward, one more. Again, this is a residence, is this from yours or is the one to the right?
I don't know if that was on.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. These are residences, the houses are located about through here, about in the middle. And again, not only do we meet the distance, this is over 100, it's over 100 feet just to the property line, which is more than the height of the tower. So it certainly can't fall. The building, again, is several stories, you're not going to see the base of the tower, you're not going to see any of the accessory structure. The, you know, I'll speak also to the gentleman who talked about the traffic. You know, when we put the tower up, it takes about 10 days to two weeks, and there is some big trucks to put it up. Once it's up, it's very limited. The only time you would see large traffic would be if another carrier were to go on the tower in, in a year or two. That's the only time you would even see that. I'm trying to go through and, and remember the, the different issues that were raised. There is a fence here, there's a fence here. Not only would we be, we'd be within those fences, we'd be within an additional fence around our compound. So, you know, the concept of, hey, this is just out there in the middle of a, you know, a parking lot or a yard is not accurate. I mean, it's, it's going to be well secured within here. This is a parking area, this is more of an open area, this is paved. And, you know, I kind of take a little bit of offense to the fact that, hey, we just stuck one in there. And, you know, the concept that AT&amp;T is some huge entity that's not here. I work and live here in the city. Everyone, everyone associated with this project lives within 30 miles of here. And it's not something that's done lightly. This is the best possible solution that we could find for this traffic to improve service. Again, if you can go to either, either direction. You know, if we could have put it up here, you know, we would have, even though that doesn't meet the service needs, if we'd put it along the highway, along the road, we would have. But we, we would be so much more in violation there than we are here. The tower would have been where it could fall onto a building, maybe within that distance. We've met all the setbacks. If this, again, if it were a different underlying zoning, you wouldn't see an issue. I'll talk real briefly about the health, I promise I won't talk very long on it. It's regulated, everything that comes out of the tower and the antenna is regulated by the FCC. A general rule of thumb is they say, hey, this is the level at which there could be harm, and it's one ten thousandth of that is the maximum that you can put out. That's a general rule of thumb for most of their frequencies. You hear people talk about EMF and that's the threat. You can find anything you want on the internet, I think most of you guys know that, and there's a ton of disinformation. And I deal with it three or four times a week where people say, hey, those things cause health. EMF, the electromagnetic frequencies, hey, they come out of your TV at home, they come out of your radio, they come out of your car, you know, any type of radar, toaster, any type of wiring, the wiring in this wall, all those put out EMF. Light itself is EMF. So right now, everyone in here is absorbing some level of EMF. It's not something that just is attributed to these towers. You've seen people jump on it and say, hey, it is, but it's really not. Can you go to the next slide? You see here, this is electromagnetic spectrum and this is visible light. These are, you know, this is where you cross over from ionizing to non-ionizing, as in damaging to your body versus not, it's when you cross right there. This is where we see the UVB and UVC rays from sunlight, X-rays, this is actual radioactive decay. So as you know, if we had an, you know, a reactor core in here, it would damage you. As you go this way, you see it less and less so. These are where your cellphones operate here, about the same as radio. The background EMF from these towers, if you could measure, if you could see it compared to what's out there right now from everything else, the sun, the light, ambient lights, streetlights, radio towers, TV towers, it's virtually nonexistent. It's a non-factor. Can you go to the, the next slide? I, I read through all of their documents. You can find anything you want to support stuff, not support it. The, right now, there are about 130 very well peer-reviewed articles out there, and it's what you would see as a scientist. Of those 130, you have two or three, such as the ones they cited in that packet, that show, hey, they cause a health risk. You'll see two or three above that say, hey, actually, the towers are good for your health. And then you'll see the vast majority in that middle that say, hey, really, they have no effect, just like we know the streetlights have no effect. An unbiased source that you could use, the American Cancer Society, has a whole page dedicated to cell towers themselves. And, you know, they'll say here, there's very little evidence to support that they're bad, cause any health problems. For these reasons, most scientists agree, cellphone antennas or towers are unlikely to cause cancer. Those reasons are what we talked about a second ago. There's no physical way, they cannot break your bones, they cannot cause cancer in DNA. The current research that you'll see going on is actually within the handsets, like the WHO study that everybody saw. They don't even study the towers anymore. It's become, you know, so understood that these really, they're not producing something that can hurt you. They now study the handset which is held to your head. Kind of the concept of, if you had a flashlight, you know, or a streetlight, it's not going to hurt anyone, but if you held a flashlight to your head eight hours a day, would it cause a problem? Well, it might, and that's what they're studying, is the, the long-term effects. You know, an interesting study, is the only real study on the handsets that's been peer reviewed, is that the University of South Florida has determined that it'll reverse Alzheimer's in mice. And that's something that they're working, you'll see a lot of labs across the world are working on now to see, hey, can we use EMF? You know, because basically what it does is it heats that area if you have it on there long enough, at high enough frequencies. But again, that's the phone, it has nothing to do with the tower. You know, insimation, this is not, you know, an easy, an easy area. It's not something that, hey, that we take lightly. We're doing the very best we can to provide service. We feel like this, you know, again, if it were, the underlying zoning is office and we feel like, hey, if it were office, this would be a non-factor. But because it's PUD, we're asking, hey, can we amend the PUD to allow all those uses that are landlocked? He didn't ask, you know, by the way, to say, hey, can I also do this? Can I also do that? You know, he said, hey, I want the tower because the, you know, the money that comes in, I can use to upgrade the facility, which is basically used, you know, for the community, as everybody here has stated. If you guys have any questions, I know this is going on forever, so I'll stop talking.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Who's the current owner of this property?
Hanif Dugan is the guy who represents the owner.
Very wide aging agency.
Do they own it?
Actually, I'm sure they may just rent it.
Yeah, I think they, I think that, yeah, I'm not sure, I could pull the, I think it's under a Mayflower name, but it's, Hanif Dugan is the, is the guy who controls it. You know, the, in regards to, actually calling the president or at least the managing member of the property owner. Do you want me, I've, I've got the actual, if you'd like to see the, I'm sure I can find What's on this? I've got the legal description on it now, but it's, again, it's, Hanif is the, is there, was there something that you wanted to follow up on?
Well, no, I mean, this piece of property obviously is kind of a unique property in the sense that it was originally a school, but when it was no longer needed as a school, you know, it was, it was beneficial to find some use of it that would benefit the community and would preserve it so that it wouldn't be just an abandoned structure. I don't think it is quite the same as, you know, an office structure, a piece of property that is constructed to be an office, or that it is necessarily a piece of property that we would zone for office use if it were presented to us as a, a blank zoning case. I can't support the placement of this tower in this location. This area is just entirely too residential for this kind of a use, in my view. And, I mean, obviously, the people who live in the area are not supportive of it. I, we struggle with the placement of these towers all over the city. The aesthetics of them is a significant issue. And I, I guess I won't belabor that point. I, I can't support the placement of it in this location.
Not from back there. If you want to talk, we need you at a microphone so we can record your comments.
But Mr. Tavon?
You may.
Before we, I have questions.
Go ahead. Commissioner Brightold.
On the, on the 300-foot issue that some of the protesters brought up, are you saying, I mean, I'm not all that familiar with the municipal code, but are you saying that, that your interpretation of that is if you put a tower like this in an area that's zoned R1?
It says, it's any type of residential. If you want to put a tower.
Staff, could you clarify exactly what it is? Is there no, is there no footage restriction between the place where the pole is and a house?
There are and we meet them, but I mean.
No, I'm asking staff. Is it, I mean, is, is staff around here to, I mean, do you know the answer to that?
Lance or Terry?
We can look it up.
All right.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm really curious about that, because I thought that there was a footage restriction. 300 feet seems to be very reasonable and if it, but if you're saying it's R1 and you can put a pole on it, you can't do that.
No, it's, you.
So what, I don't know what, see, that's what I'm, wait, that's, that's a staff answer that.
I don't think.
Before you get to your point, but the second observation that I had is that my Aunt Maxine Roberts taught grade school at Mayfair School way back there, probably when the school was brand new. She taught for years and years and years. My sister and brother-in-law, after he graduated from law school, lived in a house on 48th or 49th Street. I know the neighborhood extremely well. I live south of that neighborhood now, but from time to time, I venture in there. And, and even though your arguments were very well put together, I have to congratulate you on that.
Appreciate it.
On the other hand, the protesters' arguments were very good as well. And, and I'm on the side of Janice, is that, that this is, I appreciate competition between providers. I don't appreciate. I don't appreciate the intrusion of a neighborhood totally residential, everything's around here, totally residential, and you put an 80-foot tower when there's other places to put these towers. Now, the second observation is, is that, and we've had this discussion before about the technology. I don't know where we got, didn't get our hands around this particular issue, but at one point, the ordinance has provided that you could do a short tower. I mean, you know, we let you do it, right? And now you're putting 80-foot, 125-foot towers all over this entire city just to compete to the detriment of the appearance of this city, Mayfair neighborhood, and for what reason? It's only money. If you provide, if you can't get there, well then, you know, you get to another place where you can compete in another place, that put the towers in a place that's appropriate and it's not smack dab in the middle of a neighborhood that really is not struggling, but you're working it. They're working the neighborhood to make it really nice. I guarantee, if you were across the street from this place, if that's your house, you would be sitting right on that bench saying, not in my backyard. All of us would.
I disagree with that.
Find it, I mean, it's another place. Now, back to the technology, it's my understanding that European technology is such that there's a central locating place and then pods that go out. They don't have a proliferation of towers. The US technology seems to be, to be antiquated, back real nervous, just put a bunch of towers up and will try to do co-locations. Yours won't even, you can't even put a co-location on your tower. You're not gonna invite it, that's what it says here.
No, that's not what it says, that's not what, that's not the intent of that, that's not what that says.
If you make it into a flagpole, you can't co-
Yeah, that was the issue of, you know, they had asked, why don't you guys-
Well, use of a stealth flagpole tower, you know, I don't know what you're gonna do, but it may constitute a use of a stealth flagpole tower, so there's no co-location, and I'm just reading from the staff report, under unfavorable considerations. But that's, that's my, the technology, I think, you're not really trying because you, I mean, the industry thinks they can plant a pole anywhere they want to. But not in my backyard, but particularly not in the middle of a neighborhood that really is trying to make as many improvements and stabilize it as much they can, and an 80-foot big old tower in the middle of it where there used to be, what, area-wide aging agency and there used to be, you know, community things, I mean, you're ruining it. It's just, it just ruins the whole thing. So, I agree with Commissioner Powers, I oppose this totally.
The issue for us commissioners is the Federal Communications Act, and in order for us to deny an application under federal law, we have to have substantial evidence that there are other suitable locations the applicant has not identified or not pursued. I mean, we can't deny it based on the fact that-
I believe with some of the protesters that said that.
Well, we've got- Well, I may be able to speak, I may be able to help with that.
All right.
I paid the building off. This was owned by the School District 97, Oklahoma City School District 97. We were a nonprofit organization, and I took the check and paid the property off. That deed carries with it the responsibility that that five acres had, had to be sold, if you sell it, for public use. Cannot sell it to Texco or AT&amp;T, or it had to be used for public use. And that is on the deed, that you have to do. And if you don't do that, it reverts back to School District 97. Now, what I, what happened was, in my, the only thing I know, is that one of the organizations there, nonprofit that had it, which was the Oklahoma Mental Health Consumer Council, sold it to, my understanding is, the mosque, so I don't know who the person was, but it had to be sold to a nonprofit. This cannot be an individual that owns this property. It has to be on the deed for public use, and that's the only way you can sell it.
Well, that unfortunately is not our issue, that's a legal issue, but someone else can-
I understand, but I wanted to clear this up because there was some conversation here. Plus, you have to ask, is putting an AT&amp;T tower for public use? Now, I understand the owners may be a nonprofit organization and may make money from that, that may be okay. I just wanted you to understand, and I have the details to that, because I did, I did that myself.
Yeah, and those are title issues that-
Yeah, that is not, not a planning commission issue. But again, back to-
On your federal regulations issue, I don't know, have you found out what the rule is, what the ordinance is?
Let's see, when you're referring to the 300-foot distance between the base of the tower and residential uses, that's what you're referring to, correct?
Yes.
Okay. It's, it's the, it's under the residential district waiver, and it basically states that towers and antennas used for wireless, and so cellular telecommunications facilities may be located in a residential district provided all of the following conditions are met, and there are three conditions. A waiver, let's see, development conditions listed in paragraph B are met, the higher restrictions of paragraph B above are applicable and refer to residential uses and no districts. The subject site is vacant and/or unplanted, there are no residential uses located within 300 feet of the base tower. This site is obviously a PUD and it is zoned, or has a C3 base, it's surrounded by residential. I need to clarify whether or not, obviously Susan can probably give us some clarification on this, whether or not this is considered to be a residential district. It's C3-
The answer is you don't have an answer.
There's no answer.
Well, yeah, the base zoning for this site is C3, surrounded by residential.
Well, but the C3 is five acres. Is that right?
Excuse me?
The little square, that little, but then, it's R1 that's completely surrounding everything, so doesn't that fit?
It's only if you build on an R1 property. I've read it a million times.
I mean, you know, to me, this is a residential district. I mean, like, big deal.
But it's, but it's not, but I mean, it's, it's not.
But now, Mr. Chairman, this is my question, if we have an ordinance, if we have an ordinance that does specifically say, you can't do this within this many feet or whatever it says, does, does federal regulation usurp that? Maybe that's why they're here.
Well, and here's, Mr. Bright, if you don't want, you know, we, you know, we have not, in Oklahoma, gone to court on any of these, and that's where he's going, because again, we feel like the site itself is sufficient. We meet, you know, again, they, as I said, there are 15 requirements, and we meet every one of them.
I understand all that, but I, but I, but here's what, you know, in my opinion, listening to your excellent presentation, you have not convinced me that you've explored enough other alternatives for locations to provide the service that you want to provide within this area, and for that reason, I would not support this application.
That's a motion denied. Okay.
Go ahead.
To Mr. Gales.
Lot been said today, some of which I agree with, some of which I don't. First of all, when each of these carriers were developing their network, we had towers and tower applications everywhere. We worked with the industry, we amended our ordinance, and we were told, not by this carrier, not by Verizon, not by Sprint, but by all of them, in unison. Guys, our networks are now established, and as all we need is infill, and our towers are, we're not gonna be asking for 100-foot towers, 150-foot towers, we're gonna be going down, 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 we're eventually going to be on light poles, and you're not going to hear these. And so, as a result of that, we amended the ordinance, and the applicant made, made point of that. Said, you know, we need all these when we can, and that's why we put up all these short poles in neighborhoods. And they have, and they've been very successful in doing that. But they haven't been, and I'm not saying just AT&amp;T, I'm saying the industry in general, but also AT&amp;T, they haven't been doing a good job, they haven't even been making an effort to uphold the other part of that deal, which is stopping this foolishness, as Janice has pointed out, and as Commissioner Bright has pointed out. Now, those are general comments. Specific to this application, this particular site is zoned, how it is zoned, with the restrictions that it has because of one thing and only one thing. It is literally in the middle of a neighborhood. That's the reason for its present zoning, that's the reason for what has been on there, and apparently, from what one of the protesters said, that's the reason for the deed restriction. That is the reason, in my mind, in addition to just in general, that this application, I don't think meets the criteria we originally set out prior. But this specific application certainly does not meet the criteria of neighborhood. It doesn't belong here, this is the middle of a neighborhood, it just happens to be a spot of dirt that was a school, and when it no longer became used as a school, these restrictions were put on it. We should not adopt this, accept this.
Any other comment before we vote? Susan Westes.
I just want to make clear that federal law would preempt any kind of local regulation as far as if our denial would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of the wireless service. I think that would be a violation. So what we need to really have in the record is substantial evidence that would prove that there are other locations where they can receive the-
Well, which one of you guys is gonna volunteer to go listen?
May I speak to that? Before we have told on legal interpretation that we cannot deny this, the implementation of service. We can deny increasing that service. There is service at this location, it is being served. The network is established, we cannot, under federal law, keep them from establishing their network. That network is established. If you take that interpretation, Susan, to its fullest, then we shouldn't ever have a hearing because they can put a tower on any square inch of any property in the United States.
I just wanted you to be, to make clear that as long as they, we are not prohibiting or preventing the wireless service.
The coverage is there, and this is not an appropriate site.
And further, some of the protesters also proved by testimony that they got AT&amp;T service where they live.
I would hardly think that's something you could use, but-
Mr. Chairman, we're about to deny this, is there something important that you want to add?
If you wanted, I had a little bit of background case information on interpretation of the TCA, if that would be helpful and clear.
No.
We have legal counsel with us.
Okay. Okay, cast your votes. And it is denied. Number eight.
Number eight has been continued until September 22nd. Item nine is SPUD 625, application marked KESNER, rezone 15504 Jefferson's Garden Court from SPUD 296 to SPUD 625 and Ward 8.
If I spin around, will you guys pretend I'm somebody else after that one? This is a, you know, a similar, a similar issue in some ways, mainly in the way that, again, we meet every requirement, but it was a, this is a SPUD, and this one was zoned, you know, with an underlying commercial district. This is the, this is Pennsylvania, this is 150th. We've worked on this site for over two years, two and a half years worth of data and attempts and research into how to improve the service in this area. It's, in Oklahoma, this is the number one worst site, and we've made every effort to come and fix it again and again and again. We've never been in here, you guys haven't seen us, we never got a site to this point. This is a, the retirement village, this is currently, there's a gas station there that's not pictured, and this area behind it is slated for development. This is open, the landowner is holding it, this is also open, the landowner is holding it, this is an Edmund Public School. This area, I'm pretty sure most of this is filled in at this point. This is a 2010 aerial. Specifically, this is also a, you know, retirement facility, these are smaller homes. You come in here, go down, and at this location is where we have the health club, that's where it was zoned under that SPUD. We went through, we've contacted both of these on numerous occasions, worked almost a year on that deal before it fell through, had absolutely a no-interest response from this group and this group. Everything else in here precludes any type of tower. There's nowhere you could put it, again, if I tried to put one here, you know, we'd have a meeting just like we just had. Instead, we went to this, now, the property owner on this one, he felt that, you know, in his personal request that we use a flagpole, a stealth design, he also wanted to limit us to 75 feet. If you're familiar with our telecom ordinance, anything over 75 feet requires additional providers, anything 75 feet or under, you can build it for yourself. That's why that comment was on the Baptist one, as far as using a stealth tower, is that if you, if you use a flagpole like this one, because the antennas are inside, if you ever looked up real close, we have to take up antenna, antenna on top of each other, three feet, they take eight feet each, plus two feet, so it's 30 feet in a flagpole, just AT&amp;T. So if someone else wants to come on that pole, such as Verizon, they've gotta go way down low, so on, you know, on a 75-foot tower, their antenna, their bottom antenna is gonna be at 15 feet above the ground, and they'll never do that. So anytime you see, that's the trade-off of the stealth structure, is that you're gonna have a very difficult time getting additional carriers, unless you build like a clock tower, which is a dominant feature on the skyline, obviously. But again, you know, we used the flagpole at his request to fit in more with the SPUD. He also requested that we build, you know, around our compound, you can hold it on that one, around our compound, the fence itself, instead of what we're required to put, you know, a regular chain link fence, he wanted something that was opaque, covered it, it's within his parking lot, that's where it's located. You can see here, this is, again, this is our intersection, and you can see the current coverage through here, you see the reds and yellows are bad. One thing that doesn't show up on these, and one thing that AT&amp;T is working on, is this shows your coverage at 3:00 in the morning, basically, when no one's on their phone, this is how they work. However, if you were to show coverage at 4:00 in the afternoon, when everybody's out of school and everybody's driving home, these cell sites, instead of being this big, they're tiny, because that's that capacity issue of everyone being on at the same time, a tower can only hold so much. And you can say, well, hey, put more antennas, we're already using what we call three-carrier technology. AT&amp;T's bought up three carriers worth of spectrum to try and serve its customers. Now, you can see if we put the site here, you'll see not only a drastic improvement there, but improvement all through here. I don't, I know there wasn't a written protest, I'm not sure if we have protesters, but you will generally see, you know, when we sign them like this, far fewer protesters, you know, in my opinion, because this is a great location, there's no one that this is, that's gonna be able to see this, you know, directly out the back door, or anything else as we've had suggested. The reason, one of the biggest reasons that it's such a critical site is not only is it underperforming now, but can you go back one more to that last one? Again, we're anticipating this being, this guy's holding it for residential, this is gonna be all houses, this is gonna be houses or some sort of a mall, probably, this is being developed as commercial and office space, and this is all gonna be residential. So our problem of not being able to serve is gonna get much, much worse in the next five, 10 years, if we can't get a site in here now. And as you can imagine, once things have developed, it's much harder to do a site than it would be before. We try to get the, same with water lines or power lines, you wanna get the infrastructure in place ahead of it. I'm not sure, okay, this is just to our basic, again, it took us over a couple of years, it meets all 16 requirements. Originally, it was commercials, if it was just a commercial and it was, you know, an open-ended one- If it was just a commercial and it was an open-ended one, we'd go put the tower, wouldn't have to come in. But it's not. It was, again, it was fairly specific in what it would allow. That's why we're here today to say, hey, can we amend it to also allow this? There's those two. And the other issue here, again, that makes it such a critical, it's three-quarters of a mile to the nearest tower. We only have to be a quarter mile away. But you can imagine, that's why we spent two and a half years. There's nowhere else for us to go. We've worked and worked and worked. There's nothing within three-quarters of a mile of this area. There's nowhere for us to put it. There are no tall buildings. The only tall buildings are residential apartments, which we don't use for a variety of reasons. Specifically, those, they have nice gabled roofs. You couldn't put antennas on them. Other protests?
I'm going to ask, is anyone here today to talk to us on item nine?
If you guys have questions on this one.
No one signed up.
Again, no good deed goes unpunished. What is Jefferson Gardens? Jefferson Gardens is an empty nester development sitting in front of a assisted living center. That's how it started. That's how it was zoned. That's how it was developed. Then the developer came along and asked us, oh, wouldn't it be nice to have a fitness center for all these old folks right here so they can just walk over to the fitness We said, yeah, but we won't give you a carte blanche fitness center. Put it in an S.P.U.D. and restrict it to that use. Now, the applicant standing before us saying, this is a commercial use. I agree with him. The fitness center is a commercial use, but as he pointed out, it's not straight, full-blown commercial. If it was, they'd be in there by right. When that S.P.U.D. was done, it specifically excluded telecommunication towers.
Was it written within the PUD?
This is a residential area. Again, it happens to be a fitness center serving a very close proximity to the Jefferson Gardens little houses and the assisted living, but it's for that purpose, and it's restricted to that. And again, I don't know what PUD 296 specifically says for uses, but I can guarantee you, a use that is not included in that S.P.U.D. is telecommunication towers, or, again, they'd be here, wouldn't be here, they'd have it up by right.
Right. I mean, that's the purpose of being in here.
Again, it's not appropriate. He's made the point about other areas. There is all kinds of open area around this to go make a deal for a cell tower if they need to. This one was convenient, obviously, but it didn't meet the criteria, so they're before us. I can't support it.
Nor can I, but I think the relevant questions are, do you have service in this area?
No, based on the propagation maps.
There's no service in this area by AT&amp;T.
It's deficient.
There's no service in this area. That's what my question is. AT&amp;T cannot provide, does not have service in this area. Is that right?
David, would we be able to use the call quality index as an interpretation?
Just please, you know what the answer is. Do you have AT&amp;T customers that are in this area that answer the phone?
Yeah. So should we stop all towers?
You have a list of locations that you've explored all through this area, as Commissioner Gales indicated. There's vacant property all over the place in this part of the world. This is an S.P.U.D. specifically, as Commissioner Gales said, specifically oriented toward this residential retirement neighborhood. The work at the commission is, we do these things on purpose. We have restrictions in S.P.U.D. so that it doesn't impact the neighbors. To change an S.P.U.D. for the sole purpose of increasing your coverage, not providing initial service, but increasing your coverage so you can get more customers, is not, in my opinion, in any way, shape, or form, any reason to change what we worked on to make this area what it should be with the residential people. And I agree with Commissioner Gales, it's residential, and it's not appropriate, and I can't support it either. Any other comments, commissioners? Mike? Just looked like you wanted to say something. We don't have a motion. Move for denial. Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Denied.
Oh, I turned around twice. Item 10 is S.P. 441, application by AT&amp;T for special permits to erect an 80-foot tower in the DTD Downtown Transitional District at 835 Northwest 5th Street, Board 6th.
Yeah, I'll spin around again. You know, I'm almost hesitant to even go through the 20-page presentation because it doesn't appear that you guys are going to make a determination based on that. It seems pretty predetermined. But the first thing I'll say is this, is we meet, this is an allowed use. We meet all 16 except for one. This says you've got to co-locate on a communications tower. Now, it was contemplated by our group of, hey, that's not a telecommunications tower legally, so we could just go build the tower. But we felt, hey, the prudent thing to do would be to come before the board and say, hey, look, here's why we can't use that. Here's why it's not anything possible, and go through it. The only thing that you guys, this one, should be making a determination on is, have we proven that we can't go onto the fire station tower? That's the only thing that's up for grabs on this one. But I will go through and explain everything because I know that there's significant protests to this one as well. This site, as you guys, I know are all familiar with Oklahoma City as I am, it's really a very bad area through there, mostly because of the capacity. Again, there's just so much data and so much traffic. This site is critical for the immediate area in terms of current usage. It'll increase it quite a bit. Really critical to offload all these neighboring sites that are at capacity, both to the north, south, and to the east. And the site will get in, again, ahead of anticipated development through that area. We'll be able to serve it without having to come in after and go through a really difficult zoning. Can you go to the next one, please? This shows existing sites. Very hard to see. This is where the site in question is. This is I-40, runs along here. We have a site right there along I-40. We have a site, you can see it right here, we call Tolon Park. It's on Main Street. Again, this is classing. Here's our site. This is on an apartment building or rather an office building to the north. This is St. Francis. And these are all of our downtown sites where we're on buildings, where we have DAS systems like the Ford Center. And then there specifically is actually a site that serves right in there. So there's our sites, numbers one, two, three, four. You can see we're trying to put one somewhere in between them. Can you go to the next, please? These are the propagation maps, and this, really, this is why they're working on those new propagation maps that are more realistic. This shows, again, if you're out there at 3:00 in the morning, you're going to say, hey, really? It's difficult to make a call in here, but otherwise, it's not bad. Well, that doesn't show what things are like at 4:00 in the afternoon, when the site right here is about that, about as big as my pointer because of all the people moving through I-40. This site becomes tiny, and the downtown sites become almost non-existent most of the time. So we're working on getting a map that will show that capacity issue quite a bit better, which will lead to the things you guys have mentioned on the others in regards to showing that we don't have service. Go ahead and go to the next one. And it's a really difficult area. I mean, I think that it's, it seems presented here that we're out to just drop towers wherever we want and do whatever we please, and that's certainly not the way it's done. I mean, I've visited the site, this area, probably 30 to 40 times in the last year. For our engineering, the difficulties we have are the desired skyline. They'd like to be 125 feet to offload all those. They're not going to get that. The existing sites, as you saw those four around there, we've got to be pretty much right in the middle. We can't be too close to any of those areas, even if it's a great location leasing-wise. We can't go put anything on that because it's too close to our existing sites. The infrastructure that is going to be built around that, we know that we have to look ahead of it. The jail is an issue for a couple of reasons. You can't be too close to it because it's going to create a pretty significant shadow, as you guys can imagine, just based on its size and its concrete structure. We also have to weigh the community issues of, hey, can we meet the zoning? Can we meet all the requirements? Can we deal with developers? When I say developers, if someone's holding a piece of property on a site that you guys denied unanimously a minute ago, if I go to a developer and I say, hey, can you lease that space? They say, no, we can't. We're going to hold this. Anytime we have a developer, it makes my job much more difficult. Homeowners, as you'll see in the complaint, there are homes that are north of that, and there's some homes that are scattered through there. And so we know that those are always going to be a concern. You have a lot of historical properties down there, especially as you move to the east toward the city. Obviously, I can't go in and say, hey, let's go up on top of any of these buildings. The other issue that's thrown in there with jails is liability. The new jail's too tall. We couldn't go on it anyway. You can't put your antennas halfway up the side of a building like that. And the old jail, for any type of reason, we can't go on it, even for liability reasons, which I won't get into legally. Can you go to the next one, please? Okay. This is the center. This is our location. Now, again, here are four sites. There's the east site, south side, this is the site, that was the west, this is the east site, and there's the north side. So I can't go and return a candidate that's around these because those will interfere and they won't solve the problem. So we need to stay somewhere in the circle. You can see, here's our proposed tower right there. We considered this 50-foot rooftop that's out here between Classen and Western. It was totally inviable to our R.F. engineers. We considered this area here right north of the jail. We weren't able to lease that because it's a property that's being developed, and they did not feel at this time that they wanted to deal with us. The fire station pole is right there, which we'll talk about at length later. Here's the new jail. There's the old jail. Our original candidate, you can barely see it right there under that. That was the original candidate. Again, I told you guys that we spend a tremendous amount of due diligence to locate these sites. That was our original A. Our original B is a rooftop out here, an apartment building. When that comes back, it gets rejected because, hey, we're not going to build a tower again. We want to co-locate, and we certainly aren't going to build one that has difficult zoning. We went back through, redrove everything, and we felt that this candidate A over here created too many problems. One, it was going to not meet all of the 16 requirements, and we felt that, believe it or not, because these homes are here, we anticipate where the line of sight is for the cityscape view. And so we're not going to place a tower out there because you'll have that much more ammunition to say, hey, don't put it there. So we denied that one. We said, instead, we found one after lengthy research, relocated this one. Can you go to the next slide, please?
Excuse me. Let me ask you a question on something.
Yes, sir.
Make sure I heard you correctly. Did you say one of the...
Can you jump back?
Like a B site that was on the roof of something you...
It was, yeah, it's inviable, but that was originally turned in in the...
But then there was another one you said you didn't want to take because you would not be able to co-locate?
No. No, that wasn't...
I misunderstood.
Maybe I misspoke, but no. The other one, the original one, we couldn't zone it, the one that's marked candidate A. And the original B there, as you can see, that was the rooftop that was rejected because it's inviable. Does that answer your question?
Inviable, meaning it wouldn't give you the coverage?
Meaning it interferes with this one, and it interferes with that one, and it doesn't improve the service area.
Okay.
It'd be the same as no site. Again, we've gone over this, that there are 15 requirements. If you don't meet them all, you come get an S.U.P. It's different than the S.P.U.D.s that we discussed earlier where the board can say, hey, this is a residence, you can't put it there. This one, we get an S.U.P. because we don't meet all 15. You also have an additional requirement when you're in specific distance, such as DTD-1. You have to get an approval from that district. The site meets 14 of the 15, and it's an allowed use in this district. So if it met 15 of 15, I go build it tomorrow, or I go build it in two weeks before I have my permit. The S.U.P. that we're going to ask for right now is requested to waive the 15th requirement, which is the proximity to an existing telecommunications tower. Can you go to the next one, please? A little bit more in-depth. This is the closer part of the site. This is city glass. The tower's going to be right in here. This is the fire station. This is a sign company, vacant, vacant, vacant. These two are both vacant. This is an architectural firm, I believe. This property is also owned by our landlord, as is this one. You've got a vacant property there. These are the homes that we'll discuss later that are along 7th Street there. This is 6th Street. The cottage district, I believe in this area, Lance could confirm, but I believe it started, that this probably is cottage district. I know for a fact our site is not within the cottage district. We fall within DTD-1. Can you go to the next site, please? This is our DTD-1 approval, where we requested, can we put a tower here? They said you can put an 80-foot tower. Your building needs to be aggregate clad, which all of ours are anyway. They said we needed to use an eight-link chain link with no barbed wire on it. We generally put barbed wire on our fences when we can to keep people out. They told us install informational signs, install landscaping. As you can see, within the district, it's an allowed use, 7200.1, and it tells the user to refer to the regular conditions, the same things we've discussed meeting before. It's an allowed height per table, 7200.2, because you don't have a limit if you're not in the cottage district and you're not within a certain distance. Can you go to the next one, please? This is the tower proximity, where we said the one out of the 15 that we don't meet. You guys can read that. New telecommunications tower is above 75 feet. Should be a minimum distance of a quarter of a half mile from another tower. And we want to be an 80 feet, so we need to be a half mile from a telecommunications tower. Now, again, the emphasis is mine there because legally, we could probably argue this isn't even a telecommunications tower, but we felt like, again, the prudent thing was to come in. You'll see this momentarily. I don't know, gosh, after what we've done, I'll have to get these out. I was going to defer to the staff in regards to, yes, we meet all the requirements, rather than go through one by one to the opposition's comments, but I can do that, I guess. They use an antenna source dot com. I believe you guys saw that, where they said, hey, there are this many towers. Well, antenna source dot com is about as bad. They'd be like turning in a research paper from Wikipedia. If I turned something in that said antenna source, it would get rejected immediately. I'd get a call in about 20 minutes from my boss and my supervisor saying, hey, you like working here? If so, don't turn anything else that has that on it. The reason for that, their coordinates are going to be inaccurate, they're irrelevant to any of the statutes. It doesn't have anything to do with this because they'll do whatever. They don't use any type of quality control, as you'll see here shortly. It'll say there's a 125-foot tower there and there's a 10-foot building there. They don't go out and drive it. It's just done all by database. And the last thing you see is it doesn't return consistent results at all. You'll see it'll miss items that are there. So we don't use it. No one in this industry ever uses it. Can you go to the next one, please? These are what were identified in the protest, and I'll go ahead and point them out, as the staff had said that they didn't have this prepared. There again, our four sites are marked as existing. They pointed out, hey, you guys could use the Fred Jones Building. As you can see, we can't use that because it's proximity to these two. It doesn't do us any good. I'm sorry, that's me. It's going to cause more problems than it fixes. One of theirs that they pointed out was this, they said, hey, there's an AT&amp;T antenna source returned that, said that there's a 125-foot tower there. Well, there's not. There's a 30-foot building. We'll look at it in a moment. It actually was trying to refer to a set of antennas on a building out here that are outside of the ring and were at one point owned by AT&amp;T and now belong to Altel on a building, so they're totally irrelevant to this discussion. The one they returned that they said was .51, that's the OGNB building right beside the courthouse. It has antennas up on top of it. Again, it's a building, it's irrelevant to our discussion. St. Anthony Building was pointed out by some of the people saying, hey, why don't you go on St. Anthony? Well, they don't allow people up there. I saw somebody, and they said, there are antennas, those are not cellular antennas. They don't allow them. And again, it's a building, we're not required to go up there, and it's right next to our existing site. We wouldn't go up there.
You may have already addressed this, or not addressed it to us, but inquired. But in your searching, I'm thinking of tall buildings, and I think of the county jail. Have you talked to the county?
For liability reasons, that's totally unacceptable. And additionally, it's too tall. Would you, we couldn't put them on the side halfway up. I mean, there's so many security issues you'd have with that, that it's, I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be conceivable.
What makes it too tall?
Music to my ears, I finally found a guy wanting a cell tower-
Sure.
-that said something was too tall. When Mr. Box was bringing us 200-foot monopoles, he never had one that was too tall.
Well, they, you know, they really, as you've seen, they, we've gone lower and lower, and they'll continue to do that.
You've answered my question, thank you.
Um, behind this, you can see there's an IMSA building right there at the edge. Uh, you can't be, the bubble's kinda over, but they've got an antenna, you know, again, on the roof, it's for IMSA's equipment, it's about as big around as my arm. If you've seen any of our equipment, for a variety, numerous reasons, it's inaccurate. Uh, this is another one, it's identified in their search as blank. Uh, again, the coordinates are wrong, it's actually referring to the building right there that we're on. Uh, that's what it's supposed to be referring to. Uh, can you go to the next one, please? Well, and I'll go ahead and go on, this is the first building that it said was 18 feet, it's 125-foot tower, actually, it's a 20-foot tall building. Uh, this is the O G and E one, where it said, hey, if there's a 185-foot tower, well, it's a building with antennas on the roof. Can you go to the next one, please? Uh, this is the IMSA antenna. It's hard for me to show the scale. Again, I'm standing in the parking lot, the antenna's about, oh, I don't know, 40 feet from me. It's, it's tiny. Um, this is the last one, the blank one. Again, it's about a nine-feet-tall building, it's listed as 120, something I believe on their, uh, point. Which raises back to the other one, the, the fire station tower. Again, we would argue whether it's even telecommunications, um, which would require S U P, but we felt like we'd come in. There are two reasons we can't co-locate. One, this tower is nowhere near structurally capable of holding cellular antennas, um, as, as required by O K C statutes. And two, the fire department on three different occasions told us, no, in no way you cannot go on it, you cannot replace it, do not ask again. Uh, can you go to the next one, please? Um, this is a, the fire station pole at the base. This is a normal 150-foot pole. Uh, as you can see, there's a pretty dramatic difference. Go to the next one, please. Uh, this is a structural letter. If you guys are familiar with engineers, they don't like to make any generalizations without running a structural report, yet this one's obvious enough to those guys that they can say, hey, no way can you go on that, it's way too, way too small. Uh, can you go to the next one, please? Uh, this is our email from the fire department, you know, where they politely told us that at this time, they wouldn't consider allowing us to co-locate or replace that. Uh, neither of those two are options. Uh, move on.
Well, what, what, the department told you, if you put a pole up in your backyard and let them co-locate on it, they wouldn't?
They told us, yes, that they were not interested, do not ask, uh, again, basically. Uh, we contacted them on three separate-
But the issue, the issue is, what's the purpose of the ordinance? Is the purpose of the ordinance to, you know-
Required-
-make you co-locate, or is the purpose of the ordinance is to stop the proliferation of big poles sticking up all over the neighborhood? Don't know. You know, I mean, my, my-
Well, that's, and that's what our attorneys-
-is that it impacts the appearance of the neighborhood, and where you're talking now is a neighborhood, even though I'm curious about the downtown district, design district staff administrative approval, rather than the committee, that there is a downtown, you know, urban design review committee that didn't hear this particular issue. It was staff. So we've got two issues. One, here's staff administratively approving, and these conditions, no barbed wire and a chain-link fence. And then you have the ordinance. And the ordinance, if there's anything that, you know, ordinances can be changed, but the way that I'm hearing all of these, the kind of what we're talking about, is that we really don't have our hands around this particular subject at all, not, not asked the planning commission, nor council, nor the city, nor the staff, is that this proliferation of what it is that we're hearing today, of these poles, telecommunications, is it like the circle that you had?
Yes, sir.
Could you put a 20-foot pole up there and just stretch down the circle a little bit and still get coverage?
You could, and you'd put another 20-foot pole-
No, I'm saying, I'm just saying, if it's within a half a mile of another pole, you know, I mean, can you do it in a different way? I, I have, we have to believe the veracity of what you're saying, of everything. The circles, the, the color coverage, et cetera. We have absolutely zero way of confirming the accuracy of that information, other than believing you.
Of, of which, which information?
Wait, there's no other expert, independent of you, independent of A T and T, Verizon, I don't, I'm not focusing on A T and T, anybody that can come in here and advise us that that's right.
That, which information were you speaking of?
Coverage.
The propagation, is that, is that what you're talking about?
Here's this that we have, and now here's this what we don't have.
Okay, I was just clarifying that.
And, you know, and so, but the point is, is that, I don't know. I have no idea. All I know is, is that the ordinance says if you're within a half a mile of another pole, you can't put a pole-
It says if you're in half a mile of another telecommunications tower.
Well, we assume the fire-
Not a pole, it doesn't say pole.
I assume the fire department's pole isn't up there to practice fire people climbing-
It has absolutely nothing on it.
You know, it's, it's for communications.
It hasn't-
I assume so. Uh, but nevertheless, that's what the ordinance says. It, that's exactly, it says within a half a mile, you can't do it. So my interpretation of that is, we don't want a whole bunch of poles sticking up all over the place. Now, now, pardon me, for interrupting, but I think that we have protesters, is that right? Oh, we do.
Can I, can I finish this somewhere before, and then I'll, I'll let them go? Uh, again, as I've said, it meets all the requirements, except the setback to the fire station pole, which is not a telecommunications tower, not capable of supporting us, so we're gonna request special use permit, it's not possible due to structural and leasing issues. Every other issue, as he's mentioned, whether it becomes how you bring European technology to the United States, or using 20-foot poles, none of that is, is relevant. Real estate's not relevant, the zoning's not relevant, you know, whether or not you think the D T one was writ, D T D one was written right. We spent, you know, $50,000 already on this site, based on the city's zoning code, that we meet and we've shown this is what we can do. And, uh, at this point, you know, you guys understand what we're asking for is just the, the right to not go on the pole that can't support us.
Okay, thank you. And we do have several people signed up, three anyway. Rob Elliott would be first.
Thank you, I wasn't expecting to be first, I guess I got here early. Uh, my first thought after-
Mr. Elliott, your name and address, please, thank you.
My name is Rob Elliott. I own the property at 900 Northwest Sixth Street, which is on the southwest corner of Sixth and Francis, uh, just northwest of the proposed location. Um, it was ironic to me to pick up the application and, uh, recall how much I complained about cell service and think about being a protestant on this application. Uh, I read, read through the, the city website on, on many of the protest letters and the data that was presented by our neighbors, and have nothing really to add, I've just come to, to support those arguments. What was evident to me was that, uh, what wasn't evident was that you have apparently wrestled with this in the past. And so I did, uh, take some photographs this morning of a couple of, of towers, uh, not knowing, but you've probably all seen the, the monopole towers with the bullets on them. These towers are not specifically in the, the immediate neighborhood of the proposed location, but they are within the, the center of the city. One at, uh, 44th and, and Klassen or so, one about, um, 39th in Pennsylvania, and one at the 23rd in Pennsylvania. The one at the 23rd in Pennsylvania location that you see on the photos is, uh, what I think you call a, a monopole flagpole. And the other two are, I guess, the monopoles with a different array of the little tubular antenna devices on them. Um, one of the poles has, I think, just the upper level of the poles, and the, uh, second photograph has, has two layers of those little torpedo, uh, poles. And I guess, uh, it, it, that may be what happens when, uh, co-location is, uh, agreed to. I'm not real sure, but that, that would apparently be what they, the more, the more, you start with a series of antennas and then-
The array.
-co-locators, the array, and then maybe you just keep adding around the pole. And then, uh, just sitting here, I was kinda looking at, I didn't recall how many lights we had. It looked like we could collate a few, few more lights, but, uh, may not be desirable. Uh, you've heard all today, I've, I've heard greater arguments today, I wish we could sign up Mr. Bright, uh, on, on our speaking side, but, um, I did understand basically the, the federal communications issue, it was more of a neighborhood and how it's gonna impact the neighborhood, and, um, I'm hearing protest of it. The, we kind of know what it's gonna look like on top. I think a monopole flagpole would be more acceptable, but the other issue to me would be at the base of the tower. All of these towers, even the flagpole, have, uh, not a large, but a structure at the base. And hopefully, uh, these designs could be screened, uh, blend into the neighborhood aesthetic. We've talked about chain-link fence. Looks like the chain-link fence on this one is probably to be on the inside, the east and south side of the owner's property. And there's a fence there now, but as I recall, it has the, the vinyl slats in it. Yeah, it's hard to keep up vinyl slats. There's also a lot of other equipment, wiring, cabling, stuff involved at the base, the ground of these towers. Didn't show up very well in those photos. There's one fellow sleeping under one of them, when I took the photo this morning. Didn't wanna get any closer. The, uh, the other thing in the application that, that I took note of, probably first, um, and perhaps you've touched on it somewhat, I didn't really know how to bring it up, the veracity of the information, the, the, the quality of the science, we've seen a lot of maths, a lot of statistics, and I too, uh, have no basis to dispute any of it. In the applicant's proposal, which I imagine, since we've been before these commissions before, and, and basically they verbatim write what we write on the proposal, the, the applicant's proposal says, "We have made every effort to locate a site that will allow us to bring telecommunications service to the western side of downtown Oklahoma City, while having the least impact on the existing and future character of the downtown design district." They did not call me, and I office right across the street, and I don't know how many other people they didn't call either.
Brian Fitzsimmons, 719 North Francis. Uh, my house is approximately 400 feet due north of the proposed location. Um, I have included, probably that should be in the staff report, um, information about concern about property values and further development of the area, and how this might impact future development within the immediate downtown area, uh, or within the area immediately around this pole, which currently, immediately to the north and immediately to the west is vacant land, and it seems somewhat short-sighted that because that's vacant, that was an easy spot to put it, which would also have an hindrance on future development in that spot. I would like to offer, um, a potential alternate location that is not another pole location, but a place where they could coexist with another antenna. I had spoken with, uh, the C E O of New View, formerly Leak for the Blind, which is in very close proximity, definitely within the circle, and they are willing to offer the rooftop, which is an 82-foot-tall roof, and Sprint currently exists on top of that rooftop. It's at Fifth and-
So if you talk about alternatives later, like-
Yeah.
Stay off track.
Right. But that plays into the notion of they've, of what Rob has said, that they have not exhausted all alternatives. It took me one phone call to a nearby tall structure, and she said certainly interested in allowing that to happen.
Okay.
Yes, hello, I'm William Livalo, and I live at 825 Northwest Seventh. So that's about a half a block farther away than, uh, Mr. Fitzsimmons does. Uh, I'm sorry that I can't, uh, offer any really technical arguments here, but I feel that I'm a concerned homeowner who has just recently completed, uh, constructing my residence on Northwest Seventh Street, and because I'm on a rise, the top of that tower would essentially be at eye level for me. So I wouldn't be looking at the base of the tower, I would be looking at the array of antennas near the top. Um, I, I think people will weight aesthetic arguments differently, some people will care more than others. The way I characterize that part of town as it is now is that it's a little bit of the good, the bad, and the ugly. It's all mixed together there, and so some people might say, well, a little more ugliness, more or less, isn't gonna make much difference around there. Uh, my argument is just the opposite, that those of us who are building houses on Northwest Seventh and the adjacent streets in the cottage district feel very strongly that we're trying to improve the character of that part of town, and this does absolutely nothing to enhance that. And it certainly, in my view, impairs the, uh, I mean, affects the value of my house, and I spent a, a good deal of my own money to build it, and I would like to see my investment protected, and it's pretty clear to me that A T and T has not really investigated all of the alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lee Peoples. I'm building a house at 824 Northwest Seventh Street in the cottage district, just two blocks north of this proposed tower. There are some specific height and scale restrictions in place in the D T D one district where this tower is proposed. The rules were enforced when we bought our land, and we followed the rules. A T and T is here today trying not to follow the rules. This 80-foot-tall tower clearly violates the height provisions in place in D T D one. Because this tower appears to me to be within 100 feet of a residential use, which is an apartment building on Sixth Street, the zoning code would limit this normally to 35 feet. This 80-foot tower is vastly out of character with the surrounding neighborhood. The towers are also normally, uh, not permitted in D T D one district. Telecom towers are only permitted as conditional uses, as you are, I'm sure, are well aware. They appear to be too close to adjoining property. I don't know that they have gotten permission from any of the adjoining property owners. And, uh, we've also talked about how the ordinance requires that towers this tall not be within a half mile of other towers. You know, I'm not an industry insider, I don't have access to the information that A T and T does. I submitted information with my letter from that website, um, and I would, uh, agree with, uh, Commissioner Bright that, um, it is too near, too many other tall towers in the area, um, much more than is permitted by the ordinance, and it should not be allowed. The tower also contravenes the purpose and intent of the D T D one zoning regulations, which are, and I'm quoting from 7200, "To promote development and redevelopment of the areas adjacent to the downtown business district. The story of the area immediately surrounding this tower has not been written. Given the rapid development of the cottage district just to the north, this area has tremendous potential. The city has invested a lot of money, a lot of time through low-interest loans, block grants, and other initiatives to encourage development in this area, and allowing this tower at the proposed location would be a step in the wrong direction. This tower will not promote development as required by the zoning code, it will hinder it. The tower, more appropriately, could be located a few blocks south and a few blocks west in an area that's already developed. It's already industrial, and it would be much more appropriate in that area, and it could still be within this, uh, circle that they are proposing." I would disagree with A T and T's representative. He said real estate is not relevant, it clearly is relevant. Um, if you look at zoning regulation, section 1150, the purpose, the underlying purpose of the zoning code is to conserve the value of buildings and to encourage the most appropriate uses of land. I provided the planning commission with substantial evidence that locating the tower at the proposed location will reduce property values in the area. I provided you with some letters from two experienced wheelchairs who either have active listings in the neighborhood right now, or who recently closed listings in the neighborhood, and, uh, according to their expert opinion, uh, this tower will have an immediate and negative impact on property values. And there's also a letter I'm aware of from Mickey Clag, president of Midtown Redevelopment Corporation, that I believe went to directly to Chairman Yocel, um, giving their opinion. Midtown Redevelopment Corporation is the largest developer in this area, they've spent lots of money over the last 10 years developing it, and they agree that the tower will have a detrimental impact. The tower does not comply with the letter of the zoning ordinances for the reasons I've outlined. A T and T should not receive special consideration for this tower. Um, we've already had proof of alternate locations that have not been investigated We've already had proof of alternate locations that have not been investigated by AT&amp;T. The jail, you know, they mentioned liability of it. Clearly, there are contractors that probably go into the jail, work on heating and air and plumbing. I don't know why AT&amp;T couldn't go in there. I agree with the comments of Mr. Fitzsimmons about the Leak for the Blind building, or just all the other land that is outside of DTD-1, a few blocks west, a few blocks south, it's already developed, industrial. Why hasn't that been investigated? Also, there are alternative technologies that Commissioner Bright mentioned, and I have handouts for the commission.
Well, I don't want to get sidetracked, but we're not in a position to be looking at alternative technologies right now. The question is, is this tower up, voted up or down?
Okay. These are the, they require much smaller towers, and, you know, it's an option that AT&amp;T should investigate. I also don't believe that we have proof for the need of this tower. I am an AT&amp;T customer, I have very strong service in the neighborhood. I have no idea what those pictures with the different colors mean that they have shown, and I really don't have a reason to believe them. They have one incentive, and that is to get this tower built. And unfortunately, we don't have other opinions to present, but I have very strong service in the area. So for those reasons, I would respectfully ask that this application be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else has signed up, commissioners?
Again, on this one, it's me, whether their concerns are, you know, are valid or not, again, we do meet the 15 and 16. If you want me to go through and address the items he mentioned as far as the property lines and those things, I can, the heights, the staff, the reason the staff recommended approval and pointed out that the only thing we don't meet is a telecom is, that's the, I can't deal with, hey, it appears to be 100 feet from a house, I've got to have the survey. We spend $3,000 to find out, are we far enough from that house? Yes, we are. It's actually, you know, an apartment. You know, I have to determine, do we violate the setback? Can we do this? Are we allowed? Those have all been done and all been determined by the staff, they are correct. The only one of those that we don't meet is the co-location requirement for that one tower. And I think we've shown expressly why we can't go on that tower, you know, for leasing and structural reasons.
Commissioners, discussion, action?
Well, I, I am not convinced that this is the best place for this tower, and I can't support it, so, I mean, for all the reasons that have been stated by those people who have appeared here in opposition, I do think that this area is, is one that is in transition. It's in transition in a positive way. I think the city has a pretty substantial investment in encouraging that direction, and I don't see this as being helpful. I think that this is simply not the right place for this tower.
Well, back to the question of have they thoroughly investigated and identified this as being the only option that they've got, and is there coverage in the area now? I mean, that seems to be the...
I think there's obviously coverage in the area now, and I'm not convinced that the investigation has been quite thorough enough.
I'd like to echo basically the same thing. I believe there, I think we have proof enough to know that there is service in that area, and there are some other alternatives to another solution for increasing your service. And I don't think that's been conveyed, from what I've heard today. Therefore, I make a motion that we deny this application.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny item 10. Cast your votes, and it is denied.
So, Ms. Randall, one quick moment. Like on that one, where the record showed that you guys overruled your ordinance?
No, just shall we deny?
Or does it show as a denial?
We denied it based on the fact that we think there are, there's further investigation that needs to be done to identify a proper location.
Which isn't a requirement of the ordinance. I guess, I mean, and understand my frustrations, we, and I'm not going to try and change, get a revote or anything.
No, I understand.
But we met every requirement, and you guys said, "Hey, those requirements don't matter, we don't want a tower there." That's what just happened.
The ordinance is against you. We have evidence provided by Mr. Fitzsimmons that there is an location right in front of you.
There's a telecommunications tower.
That they would do a rooftop location, right there.
He didn't point where it was, and it doesn't matter, it's not a telecommunications tower, that's what the ordinance says. And I just want that on the record, that you guys overruled your ordinance before we move forward.
Well, Chairman? He brings a point. We amended our ordinance a number of years ago through lengthy negotiation with the industry. I believe it is time to revisit that, and I would suggest that until we can revisit it, we adopt a moratorium on future cell towers.
I agree with that.
Do we vote on that?
No, it's not on the agenda.
I don't think we do that. We can take it up.
We can take it up at the end of the meeting and instruct staff.
Item 11, just for change of scenery, is an application by SiteXL for a special permit to erect a 125-foot telecommunications tower in C4, General Commercial, and I2, Modern Industrial Districts at 4416 Southwest 3rd Street and Ward 3.
Good afternoon. I'm Ron Toler, I'm with SiteXL LLC. Our address is 16607 Cantrell Road, Suite 5, in Little Rock, Arkansas. And I'm here as an agent for AT&amp;T. I guess I'm glad I followed Mark because he covered a lot of things that I might have covered, maybe I'm not so glad in other ways. And also, it's been a long time since I've done a zoning presentation. I think it was in Dayton, Ohio for a company called GTE. So I'll tell you how long ago it's been, so I may be a little rusty, just bear with me. There are a couple of things, though, that I want to talk about that maybe haven't been talked about so far today. There's been a lot of talk about cellphone coverage, when in fact, we need to go a little further than that. Wireless is not just cellphones anymore. And I'll go to Mr. Gale's comment. He talked about how, at one point, the industry said, "We're starting big, we're going to go lower and lower and lower, and we're going to get to a point where it's on tops of light poles." And I probably said that back in 1996, I probably did. But we had no idea the direction that the industry was going to take, the popularity. There's now, what, 83% of the people of a certain age in the United States have a cellphone. Then along came the smartphone, the iPhone was the game changer. And now, I'm not sure that we care how long it takes a kid to download the latest video from Lady Gaga, but they care. And that's what's going on with these phones, and they're taking up a great bit of bandwidth to do these things. We go on it every day. I go on mine every day to look on the internet, to look at sports news, to look at my stock quotes. That's what we're talking about, but we're talking about coverage now. We're not just talking about talking on the phone. Then there's iPads, another big game changer. The desktop is going away. The laptop is probably going to go away. It's all going to be wireless. Everybody demands and expects to have wireless coverage. Now, I know that they talk about the aesthetics. To me, the power lines that run through my neighborhood are much uglier than a single cellphone tower, but they're there because people demand electricity. And when they flip that switch, they expect it to work. And these towers are going where they're going because people demand to have cellphone coverage. Also, another thing that we haven't talked about is M2M, machine-to-machine. It allows the EMT that's on the side of a wreck to be able to take pictures of that person that's injured, transmit it back to the hospital where a doctor can tell him what to do, and it's all done wirelessly. It's all done in this exact same network that AT&amp;T is building. So it's not just coverage for phones anymore. We, I have covered, or I have represented every major cellphone carrier across the Midwest and in the Southeast, and I will tell you that every one of them want to be a good corporate neighbor, they do not want to make neighbors mad. They don't spend billions of dollars building out this network just to satisfy a few people. They have people coming in their offices every day demanding that they have good cellphone coverage. In fact, when I was building out Cincinnati, when we launched Cincinnati, we used to have search rings of a mile wide. They need to see the search rings that they've given, and I don't, I didn't do PowerPoint back when I used to do this, mine's not as cool as his is, but if we could go to mine that shows the proximity to the other tower, that's not it. Let me just, let me just go ahead. When we started out, our search rings were a mile wide, and RF engineers said, "If you can find me a willing landowner in here that we can get it zoned in that mile-wide search ring, it'll work." Because they just, they had to cover a big area. But as more and more people started using the phones, those search rings got smaller and smaller. And so now, the one that I used in this particular search ring was a quarter mile. And we did look at all the properties in there that we felt like we could get zoned and the people that would lease to us. Some people don't want to lease to us, some people want to hold us hostage, but we do a very thorough job in trying to find the appropriate location. This one does have an existing tower of four tenths of a mile southwest from it. It did not work for the RF engineer. There is a reason. They have to work within the AT&amp;T system. Verizon may be able to use that tower, but AT&amp;T can't because it has to overlap perfectly with the other towers in that system. So we have done everything we could to get this in a place where we feel it's an untruce of, we're trying to get out of the landowner's way as much as possible, that's the reason it's back in the corner, and we didn't meet the setbacks to the adjoining properties. We've got letters out to those folks, and I've already talked to one of them, and he's fine with it, but we don't have those today.
This is back to your analysis of what we don't know.
Well, I mean, this, I don't know.
This one actually seems to fit more.
With the exception that a quarter of a mile away, there's another...
Well, I understand. And can you co-locate, that one of our requirements is go that quarter mile away and co-locate on it so we don't have to build another tower? He's addressed that part.
I think that you're addressing the part was, was that the system that AT&amp;T put on there doesn't allow for you to co-locate. Is that right?
Oh, no, 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 we can co-locate if it works within the system. But what I'm saying is, the towers that AT&amp;T has placed don't match up with the towers that Verizon's placed. So their system, they designed it one way, the AT&amp;T designed it another way, and it has to fit within that one quarter-mile search ring.
All the more reason that we have to get our arms around this, perhaps standardization of what the poles do, how they can be, you know, they're compatible with all other carriers? I mean, I, you know, this could just be crazy.
No, I understand what you're saying, but when we all started out, and you were right, one of you said it about Europe, they had one standardized, it was GSM. But when we started out, everybody was using different technologies, so the system started out on a different footprint. And I'm not an engineer, so if I get too deep into this, it's really going to sound bad, but we always try to co-locate whenever possible because it costs money, and we have to go out and we have to lease from a landlord, and we have to go to zoning hearings, and it's expensive to do. So whenever we can, we're always going to try to co-locate first. It's just in this instance, it didn't work within the system, within the engineering system.
Is it too late to reverse that trend? And to, whatever, whatever you're going to construct, if this is approved, that it's compatible with all other carriers?
That would be an engineering question, and I don't even know how to get you into that.
It's kind of like, there should be some standard things.
Well, maybe, or should, maybe there should be, but at this point, there's not. And what we're doing with here, or with specific applications, and to me, this one, it's not a little postage stamp deal that's stuck in the middle of a residential area, it's in an industrial area, it's in the back of the mini storage, we're not talking about ball radius issues and all those other concerns we often express. This one looked to me like it pretty well met the criteria.
I have to agree. You know, as I'm looking at my site map, there's not a house in sight, you know? It's in a, it's in a commercial and industrial area. There are hotels around it, and whether I would want to look out my hotel room and see this kind of a tower or not, you know, it's a choice people can make when they choose to stay in the hotel. You know, short term, it's, if there are health effects or if there are not health effects, you know, your exposure's limited to a night or two. Whatever the issues are with respect to the location of these kinds of towers, I don't see them as presenting a problem at this location.
I just had one question on, on the pole itself. Is this the traditional monopole or one of the telescoping poles?
Yes, it is. It's just a monopole, yeah.
I don't normally look for cell towers when I check into hotels, so that's not a concern, but we don't have the separation requirement or property line setback or fence height? I mean...
Oh, and I'm sorry I didn't address fence height. Yes, she did, we will build a length-foot fence, I believe that's what you asked for, and we will do that, and we'll have plans changed to reflect that.
A chain-linked fence?
I believe it's going to be a wood fence here.
A real, a real fence that just describes that.
Yeah, privacy fence, I could think of.
One of the comments that certain of the protesters on other applications have said is that they have not received any notice of this, of any, of the prior three. People said, "I didn't know about it at all, I didn't know about it at all." This hotel ownership all around you.
Right.
And were they properly notified?
Well, and I'm glad you asked because I had a question as I was talking with your planning department. We sent, I sent certified letters to the property owners to the south and to the west. Now, they, they're the only two property owners. I didn't to the east because I didn't think, since we impacted them, I needed to. But if I need to, tell me, I'll do that. But we did send letters to the south and to the west. I talked with one of the landowners yesterday, and he's fine with it, he's sending me back the consent letter. We went ahead and kept it on the agenda because I thought maybe we could bring this back to you later.
But the hotel, you said, you sent it to the east or not?
I did not, because I didn't, since we're not...
Are you 300 feet from them?
Oh, I believe so, yeah.
That's not the requirement for notice, though, Bob.
What is the requirement for notice?
Not 300 feet.
Lance?
300, it's 300 feet or a minimum number of people noticed.
Have we, have we met our, have we met our notice requirement on this application?
Yes, we have. Yeah, 300 feet.
You may have contacted people, but we've met our notice requirement.
Say that again, please, for me.
The requirement is 300 feet. If there are 15 people within that, that 300 feet, then we stop, but if there's not, we increase it in 100-foot increments.
Until you get a minimum of 15 people notified, that's what I said.
How do you define then hotels? I mean, like...
They own them, they have owners.
He's a property owner.
I mean, this gentleman may have sent letters on his own, but...
So why wouldn't that property owner have been notified?
They have been.
The city said they own, he said what he said. Well, no, he said he didn't send it to the east. The city did, Bob.
Okay, just...
So nobody responded, no protests?
Couple of questions, though, before we go too far. Okay, so as I'm looking, though, at the review, the actual report here, says, one, we're not a half mile away, we're less than.
Four tenths.
Four tenths, okay. 2105, so I guess, what is, 2105, what is, 43, how many feet is a half a mile?
2640.
2630?
40.
So we're 500 feet short, rough cuff. And then we don't have the 25-foot distance from the property line setback, so we're off there. Second deficiency in the application, as I'm just, just looking at my report before we get together and start saying, "This looks pretty good." Then it lies adjacent to the west property line approximately eight feet, so we haven't met the setback there either. So that's three, three deficiencies. And then 50 feet from the property line, it doesn't look like we met that, so that's four. I move denial. Come on.
Is there...
I'm just saying, we're...
I understand what you're saying.
We're not close.
And like I said, we've sent request for letters of consent, which is what the code requires. requires.
Right.
I don't have those letters of consent today, but I have verbal consent from one, and he's mailing the letter now.
Well, I, I don't think that's quite good. I mean, look, folks, if we're gonna have some, we, we had three applications ahead of this that we were a little strenuous on, needless to say. But I'm, I mean, written consent, if we're gonna get consents, let's get the written consents. If we're not, let's not. I'll give you two weeks to get them.
Okay.
If you'd like a default, come back in to cure these deficiencies. I think that's reasonable, but let's get them all done. I mean, we're saying we want more clarity about our telecoms, but let's make sure we, we enforce our own requirements with respect to those.
Could I ask this? Because I was directing by, directed by your planning department to go ahead with this, even though I didn't have the letters of consent.
Understood.
So can I get the letters of consent within that two-week period and not have to come back before the planning commission?
No. I think you'll have to come back.
Let me ask you, you said you did get letters of consent from the property owners to the south and to the west?
No, ma'am. I mailed them requesting letters of consent.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, but I didn't to the east because I didn't think it impacted them.
Does it?
Okay, thank you.
And of course, the purpose of a special permit is to allow us to waive the half-mile, or the setback, or any of the other conditions if we elect.
I'm not as much troubled by...
If we elect.
The, the half-mile, I'm just pointing out that there are, it seems to be some gaps with completion of the application. I'm not saying that I vote no. Were these gaps filled? But I think they ought to be filled, and I think that that's part of our job, especially letters of consent regard, from the property owners. I'd like, the half-mile is not gonna change necessarily in two weeks. I'm not expecting that, but I'd like to get those consents done, and I apologize for any miscommunication that you might have had with respect to the staff. But I'd like to see those things, those requirements fulfilled. Because I think setbacks are important with respect of these type applications, and so I think I would, I'd like to see that done.
We want to continue for continuous?
Some of it.
Second, you agree to it?
Are you agreeable to that, sir?
Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely.
For two weeks, to the, to the next meeting?
To the next meeting.
Thanks.
Okay, cast your votes.
Thank you.
You're continued.
I would like to clarify, that's Development Services Department, not planning.
Yeah, we're gonna take a recess and resume at about 4:20.
Okay, we are back in session. Russell, next case.
And now for something completely different. PUD 1448, application by Oklahoma City Landfill to rezone 6309 South Bryant Avenue from I-2 to PUD 1448 in Ward 4.
Motion to approve? Oh, just kidding.
It's okay with me. I'm Robert Thompson on behalf of the applicant. My office is at 6301 Waterford Boulevard and we're here to represent Oklahoma City Landfill. This is one in a series that we've brought to you previously for a soil-borrowed landfill to support the activity of the landfill which is immediately west and south of the subject tract. This is a 10-acre tract that's the subject of this soil-borrowed landfill that will really square up our property ownership and boundaries along the east side of the landfill properties. It's where Car Cab has been locating their business. The tract was acquired by Oklahoma City Landfill. This application proposes to use that as a soil-borrow to continue to support the landfill activities as required by both your ordinances and state statutes. By having it on-site, as this continues a pattern that we've tried to establish, it allows us to keep trucks off the road for purposes of hauling dirt. There will be no access for soil-borrowing activity off of this track onto Bryant Street to the east. Rather, the dirt will be all hauled internally. And with that, submitted for any questions? I'm not aware of any protests that have been filed.
No one has signed up.
That is Wes Jimmer here. He's our landfill expert.
I actually talked with Jimmy Allen and he told me he was going to be absent and he authorized me to state that he had no problems with this. He keeps a close watch on us.
No, that's exactly what I'm saying. He really does.
And that's why I would not be here without first checking with him to make sure he didn't have any problems we needed to solve before we got here.
He did not have any problems with it. Based upon that representation, I move approval of the application.
We have a motion, a second to approve item 12. Cast your votes. And you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 13 is PUD 1441, an application by Kelly 23 LLC to rezone 13002 North Kelly from AA and R1 districts to PUD 1441, Ward 7.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissar, Brian Coon, Coon Engineering, representing applicant. We have met since the last meeting. I've met with three of the planning commissioners to talk about signage and worked out a lot of issues. We had one other issue that I do want to mention that James Williams and I talked about Tuesday, about signage on the building. And in the document, it will be limited to only address, name of the building, or name of the owner of the building, or the business. So you can't have, you know, Tuesday specials, or three-for-one, or whatever advertising on the side of the buildings. Has to be address, name of the building, or name of the owner of the building, of the business. Other than that, one or the other, and I'll go ahead and just offer this up, Commissioner Bright asked today, we had two monument signs on Kelly that would be 25 feet high. He has driven it a couple times, looked at it, and requested that we made a change to that. So what I'm going to say is the south sign will be 25 feet of those two that were on Kelly. The north one will be 20 feet. Because you're looking down at it and I think we'll be able to see them both adequately with that.
Brian, how large are the two tracks that actually front on Kelly?
They're about 300 foot of frontage on both.
And the acreage of them?
Right now, they're probably two to three acres. As you weren't here last time, those lots are in 75-foot pieces, so someone can take more and more and more as we go.
We're going to see what the signs look like, site plan review. We'll see all that stuff.
Every building that comes will have a site plan or specific site plan review.
James and Janice may have other comments, but I thought this was a relatively difficult piece of property, fronting on Kirkpatrick as it does, and then the car dealership issue on Kelly, and then how commercial you can put things in there. But I think the result of our meetings was that I think that, you know, Brian was, and his client, was receptive to what we were asking for. And, I mean, oh, wait, are there protesters?
No one has signed up. There's no TEs.
That I think that, just with the difficulty of the property and what was agreed to with us, and that's in the application, I move approval of the application.
The only variance from what we see in the report is the-
The 120-foot sign.
The 20-foot sign on the north.
On the north side of the Kelly location.
So your motion includes that change?
And I might add on the building letters, it'll be the logo, the name of the building, the logo, the name of the business, or the address, still has to come back for our approval. And all of it still has to meet the appearance quarters sign regulation where it says that it has to be in proportion with the building, the materials, and all these things. It didn't alleviate that. We just wanted it limited to that text, categories.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second to approve item 13 as conditioned. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 14 is a preliminary plat of the same project, C-6289.
Again, for the record, Brian Coon, Coon Engineering, five TEs on this one. Item TE number three, we need a variance on. We agree with all the other TEs.
And again, no one has signed up, commissioners?
I move approval of variance on TE number three.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the variance. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Move approval of the application.
We have a motion, a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 15 is PUD 1447, an application by First United Bank to rezone 11800 North I-35 Service Road from multiple zoning districts to PUD 1447, Ward 7.
Again, for the record, Brian Coon, Coon Engineering, representing applicant. Properties out by, nearby where the old Lorik Ranch was, you heard it, well, you haven't seen this one yet. There's a Shamrock Station. We are immediately north of that Shamrock Station property, up by 122nd. The track two, shown on the map, is for a personal storage. It'll be all enclosed, more for motorhomes, boats, not the kind of personal storage you rent a 10-by-10 unit to put your stuff out of your grandma's house in. So they're larger units. Track one will be two tracks. It all comes off of one driveway, though, on the north side of track one, so we only have one driveway on 122nd Street, I-35 Frontage Road. I also met with James on this yesterday, actually Tuesday, met with staff on Tuesday morning, met with James that afternoon, worked out all the issues. I do have a few things that I'll just mention on the record. I have them in writing, so I can give them to staff, so it can talk fast. TE number one, that we agree to the TE, but we do want wholesale storage distribution on all, both tracks, so we could have it out front, which is what's going on all the way up and down I-35. TE number two, I agree with. TE number three, the appearance corridor standards will apply in track one only, and it's on the west-facing buildings, west-facing side of the buildings. The number TE four, we agree to the pitch roofs, but not the 512, 612 with these units being so large. If you put that huge pitch on, you're going to have a really tall building. So we agree with pitch roofs, it just won't be a 5 or 612 building.
Hey, Brian, I have a question. Going back to three. And this is a concern I think we need to think about. We approved a similar variance to a storage facility that's being built along the Kilpatrick tollway over near Yukon. And they indeed have put brick or masonry on the west ends of the building, but all you see is metal. When you drive through there, you see a little patch of brick and a whole bunch of metal. So I think we need to rethink that. Maybe something more about what's visible from the highway, or from the west side, instead of just the west end of the building. Because it's not very pretty. I mean, it doesn't look very nice.
I agree with you on that. I was going to have some dialogue on that after you went through your TEs. I think just the west side, I think we need to talk about what's visible from the highway.
Maybe just be a little more specific about what-
Well, in looking at the site, what's west and what's south and so forth, how you cite a building on this, it's on the service road ramp coming off? Or a service road that runs at an angle away from 35 and-
Yeah, because it don't have a true west to it. It's got a northwest and a southwest. How about we do this, and I'll add aside, on track one, track two is over the hill. I don't think you'll ever see these storage units. But on track one, what we could say is any building that fronts I-35, which would be the northwest boundary, and then any building facing the southwest. So anybody driving on I-35, looking over to the right would see the west and the south side in general.
I think any building facade in either tracks one or two, visible from the public roads, should be properly covered.
Okay, what if there's a sight-proof fence on the storage? Because we have to have a security fence on that.
I'm saying if it's visible. I mean, if you're saying there's a sight-proof fence and I can't see it, that's fine. But you're not going to do that up on track one, but you may on track two.
Okay, I think I'm okay with that. Because my longest side of track two is behind those other warehouses, so you'll never see that.
Well, then that's fine.
Okay, this is a very expensive decision that we're getting ready to make, and I think I'm okay with that.
If you want to go think about it, we'll be back here in two weeks.
No. No, because we're out of contract if we do. So I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. On the metal buildings, we're now back to number four. We're okay with the earth-tone colors. However, he does want to do some kind of a contrasting trim to make the buildings look nicer, so I want to add that language. On the fourth paragraph, and this is one of the things in your new regulations about storage buildings and metal siding, the new regulations say it has to be flat material. Well, flat material will be kind of like a tin can. We need to do, it's kind of an R, what'd you call it, R? R-panel, which provides rigidity into the panel. I think we've got to be careful. So we want to take the word "flat" out, maybe?
Well, I visited with, you know, I told you I visited with JJ to find out what the intent of that is. When we did that, we were trying to get away from those R-panel, those ridges, like the traditional warehouse buildings, or metal buildings. And when they're speaking of that, they're speaking of a panel that has a rigidity to it, that you can attach stucco to it or something. It's just not like a piece of sheet thin that you're screwing up. So you might visit with JJ on the real details of the intent of that type of panel. Yeah. After I visited with him, I was more comfortable with it.
But we can't just put-
It has a backing. There's some kind of backing to it. It's like a panel opposed to a sheet. Like a library is a panel, and it's attached to a sheet, you know? Flat panels on it.
Yeah, but you're saying you want some kind of panel that has a backing to it?
Well, talk to JJ. We want the flat material. JJ can give you more instructions about-
You don't want a quantity-
No.
Okay, I'll talk to him about that. I agree that, I mean, if it's something we can't do, then we may be backed.
Well, we did a lot of work on, as I committed with storage buildings, getting rid of that V and R-panel and all that. So the staff has more detail about the exact type of panels.
I'll talk to them about that.
But we never had any attention of just like a little piece of tin or something.
TE five, we agree with. TE six was about adding 20% more landscaping points because we're in appearance corridor. And I'm saying we'll do that on track one. But track two, you won't see the landscaping from the street because you're going to have buildings on track two, or on track one. TE seven, we agree with. TE eight, this has to do with being able to put the building on the property line as part of your fence. And we're okay with that, and I talked to James about this. And this talks about next to RA, any R-residential. On our, I'm going to call it the east line, which is the southeast line, that line could have a building as the perimeter, but every 25 feet, same as a fence, it has to have some kind of a stone-looking column. And what we also agreed to on that line, and we'll figure out the verbiage, if there's going to be an end, it's going to be a fence, instead of just the building. And he is suggesting, and I think it's a good one, make that the same material as the building. That way you don't have metal with stone, and then a wood fence for 30 feet on each end. So those would be with stone or brick columns on that remainder fence. Does that make sense? That was his idea, and I appreciate that. TE nine, we agree. TE 10 is regarding signage, and in the original staff report, it said that each building would get a sign. And we've backed off that, said each lot will get a sign. So if I put three buildings on track one, or 10 buildings on track one, I still only get two signs, because there's only two lots. And then I get a sign on I-35 that advertises track two. So they're both monument signs. So there, we agreed with staff on that, and James, I'll talk. TE 11 and 12, we agree with.
Okay, Brian, let's go back to 10. Or maybe not back to 10, but maybe 9.10 of the staff report that talks about sign regulation. That part talks about pole signs limited to 25 feet will be on I-35. It does not define how many. Nowhere in here do I see anything prohibiting billboards. I believe this site is very close to a site where we had a big-time discussion about relocating a billboard. And it would probably behoove you to address the fact that there will be no billboards and define your pole signs.
There will be no pole signs.
No pole signs.
No pole signs.
No billboards.
There will be no billboards. The billboard that is there, if, once this zoning passes, will become a non-conforming use billboard. If it ever blows down, tornado knocks it down, it can't be rebuilt, because it'll be non-conforming.
Now, Nick, on what you're, the way that this is written on TE 10, just to clarify, signs within this PUD shall conform to C-3 sign regulations except as noted herein. And so the noted herein is the eight-foot monument signs and no accessory signs.
That's what TE 10 says.
Well, this is my question. Why is that first sentence even in the picture? That the section 9.10 shall read freestanding accessory signs? No, you know, I mean, just delete the, they'll conform to C-3 because I think that may get into the same confusion as-
And that was my, that was my whole point.
Just strike that first sentence. Because that throws it into the category of, I can put a billboard on a place or we approve 15-foot monument signs. Okay, that's stricken, that first sentence.
I'll try to figure that out. What we're asking for is 25-foot monument signs on I-35. No pole signs, but 25-foot monument.
That's not what TE-
Well, but that's covered in TE 10.
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
It's just the first sentence of TE 10 that Bob's talking about.
Look, this is what I read, and this is what, when I said I'll approve this. These signs shall be ground monument signs with a maximum size being eight feet high. Period. Keep going. Well, what do I see, 20-foot? Am I missing it?
No, that's my whole point about this.
I would never approve anything that you're talking about with big signs on this piece of property. It's a monument sign.
We're going to do a monument sign. We're going to do a monument sign. No, we want 25-foot.
Where is it that that says 25 feet?
It's not on the staff report, because it's something that James and I and staff worked out on Tuesday morning.
I don't see it at all.
Because staff report was done at the end of last week.
You know, so- And I think that that's where, Nick, you're coming from, is that-
All I wanted to do is TE 10 should totally, and I believe it does, countermand what's in the staff report, because that's what it says. Shall state this. But then it defers back to the C-3 regs. And what Brian's saying is, you know, if we take that out, all we have to add here is, I'm going to get my 25-foot monument signs, there will be no pole signs, there will be no billboards. If that's just an amendment or an addition to TE 10, I think we're there.
You hear that language drop up, Brian?
Well, there's two lots on track one. Each one, one per lot. Now, I get a sign on I-35 for track two. Yes, ma'am. So there could be three. I don't want any, I'm not trying to pull fast. Monuments on I-35.
How many?
Three. One for each lot, and one for the user in the back. No pole signs, no billboards.
And that's what you agreed to, James, right? Okay.
One, it was signs per building. I had signs per building, but then I was going per lot.
Yeah, but all he's saying is he wants, on his back lot, he wants to move that sign up front.
And I'll work with staff how to word that, because I was confused too. It says one thing, that says another, it says unless, otherwise.
Well, what troubled me is when we defer back to C-3 sign regs, all of a sudden we're talking about 40-foot pole signs with 200 square feet and-
Billboards.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we don't, we're-
Well, what would be simpler in future staff reports is if we have very specific sign discussion spelled out, we don't need to make a reference to the underlying zoning. It just makes confusion.
No, I mean-
Sorry, so we're done on signs?
Well, no, one more question on sign. Last sentence, or last paragraph of TE 10 says, if electronic display, are you going to have an electronic display?
You've got some rule that EMD-1, I don't know what that is, maybe that means it can't flash or whatever. I mean, we'd like that ability, which I think you all have said EMD-1 is fine. So I want to do that.
That's fine. My one question was, this says if, and it does limit it to level one, but if you weren't going to have them, I was going to delete that.
I'd like to have at least level one.
Fine.
Now, I have the same concern about the language under 9.10.3 where it says non-accessory signs, and it starts off by saying, unless otherwise provided herein, non-accessory signs are specifically prohibited. I know that's language that the staff uses in, you know, virtually every staff report it does. I would like for it to say, you know, start with, non-accessory signs are prohibited. Period. In this particular case, it may need to be modified a little bit, because you're saying there's an existing one that will become a non-conforming use.
Well, but there's another one there, Janice.
But instead of saying, unless otherwise provided herein, I wish it would just say, non-accessory signs are not permitted. Period.
Well, then you have to go a little further and say that that sign we're moving off of track two up to track one, that would become a non-accessory sign. We have to allow it.
It says up here somewhere that any sign containing the name of any business is deemed accessory, even if it's not placed on the parcel where the business is located. So I think that allows for that, doesn't it? Not sure.
I don't know.
Okay.
All I'm saying is I want one sign for each other lot, and a sign that says, I've got storage back here in the back.
And I thought this was going to go quickly.
Well, I'm not asking for a cell tower.
All right.
All am at it? No, sir.
No one has signed up. Are we clear now on what we're doing? Okay, James, you want to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the application as amended, but I think those amendments should get with the staff and make sure, the staff make sure the intent of what we're asking for on those items as far as the signs are concerned and-
Signs and siding.
And the siding and the visibility- And the siding and the visibility of, the visibility of the structures from the, from the highway.
Okay.
But then also, in the future, you know, it's kind of hard when we do a lot of changes.
I agree.
We have that many TEs. I think we ought to really try to work that out.
I agree.
Before we get here.
I agree.
Or if we know we can't, let's just go ahead and continue it.
But I agree.
I'd just like to share, you know...
I agree. If it wasn't for the contract, I would, I don't like doing this either.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Item 15 is conditioned. Cast your votes and it's approved.
This may not be the time, wait till the end of the meeting, but, but I want to talk about what Commissioner Irwin talked about with that particular location where the exposed metal buildings are visible. I'd like to re, I'd like to revisit that application.
Let's do that later.
So you won't forget.
I won't forget.
Item 16 is PUD 1445, is an application by Rico LLC to rezone 13940 Broadway Extension from O2 and C3 to PUD 1445 in Ward 8.
Again, for the record, Brian Coon, Coon Engineering, no TEs on the staff report for the first item for the zoning. Met with Mr. Gales, and I believe we've addressed his concerns from the last meeting and request approval.
No one has signed up, commissioners? Move approval. Here's one where I would also say, when we talk about looking at what we're doing on the sides of buildings, we're talking about specifically a west side or a south side or something. And I would suggest we use language such as visible from the roadway so we know we, we capture something when it's not just parallel with the roadway.
Yeah. I meant my motion to include that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Item 16 is conditioned. Cast your votes and it's approved.
Item 17 is CE 6290 in the preliminary plat of Northgate Office Park in Ward 8.
Brian Coon, Coon Engineering, Representative Apken, the TEs, we agree with all of them. I need a variance on TE number four, which talks about private driveways. We agree with all the TEs.
And again, no one has signed up, commissioners?
Move variance in TE four.
A motion and a second to approve variance. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you.
And move approval of the application.
Second.
And a motion and a second to approve item 17. Cast your votes and it's approved.
Items 18 and 19 have been continued. Item 20 is SPUD 624, application by Oklahoma City University to rezone 1933 Northwest 23rd Street from multiple zoning districts to SPUD 624, Ward 2.
Good afternoon or evening. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is OCU, and what you're getting now is a packet with a couple pictures. It shows the, the building before and then the building as it is now. This is OCU's blue teak. And what blue teak is, it sells refurbished goods, used goods, and it's a retail store that's run 100 percent by students. So the students are able to get some real-world experience while getting class credit. All proceeds are pumped back into a scholarship fund. It is open to the public. What, what required us to come back with this spud is they need an accessory structure behind the main structure for storage. There is an existing slab from what was the original detached garage that they're going to put a wood frame building on. That is, brings us to the issue of, one of the, only TE is a setback issue. We would ask that we not have to comply with that. We own the property to the north, so there's no, no need to buffer that. And as I said, the slab was built on the property line, and that's, we're going to use that existing slab. And like I said, it's just storage. It's not going to have sewage, not heat and air, just for the, stored for the retail store up front. Ms. Powers and I had a conversation about a couple of the uses in our spud. She was concerned with the use unit, convenience sales and personal services. Talked to the client, they're willing to take that out. And the other issue she had was with the, a kennel. And we want to keep in the possibility of a animal veterinary, but we're willing to say no kennel boarding facility. But if it is a veterinary office at some point, the ability to have an animal stay overnight, we, we want to keep. But we're fine with no kennels. With that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Well, five-foot setbacks on accessory buildings and garages is common in the older areas of the city, so that to me is a non-issue.
Also, this, I'm sorry, I was whispering. And this is in compliance with the overall OCU plan. We looked at that to make sure that it was. And the Urban Design Committee recommended approval of this. So after visiting with Mr. Box about a couple of the uses and getting those clarified, I, I am supportive of this application and would especially pleased with the limitation on the signage and so forth. So I would move approval.
Second.
And no one has signed up, fortunately. Motion and second to approve item 20. Cast your votes and...
They must stop working. They must have...
All of a sudden, our, our board is not working, so all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? It's approved.
And just for clarity, that includes the TE number one, or the TE being deleted so that we don't have to meet that. Our SVP asked for no second.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Item 21 is SPUD 627, application by Jimmy Leroy Jordan to rezone 337 West Wilshire from C3 to SPUD 627, Ward 2.
My name is Malcolm Hall. I have this property under contract to purchase.
What's your address, Mr. Hall?
Oh, I'm sorry, 6800 West Melrose in Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Pardon me. I have a property under contract to buy, subject to zoning, and I own the property immediately to the east, and I will develop this as I have that property immediately to the east. If you refer to the map there, if you go further east, there's a 7-Eleven, and I own the block, the entire block that's developed the same way, just further to the east. Jimmy Jordan is deceased, but he operated a radiator shop there for a number of years. Had three-bay radiator shop and an outside lift and a little storage building in the back. And we will tear that down and make this building match the others, which is a concrete tilt-up building. We have corrugated sides, corrugated panels on the side, and we have, our wing walls are made from concrete, and they are, they have a wall that's covered with terrazzo over the top, and then they are archways that cover, that go from space to space. There will be five, five particular bays here. I cater to small, small-use, small-and-paw operations, and this will just be consistent with what I have. I agree with all of the staff recommendation, but for one, I'd like to get a clarification that adds to signs. I have a sign that's already there that Jimmy used to have, and what I'd like to do is I would, I would like to keep that sign there. It is a pole sign, but what I would like to do is I have brick flower beds up against the building, and I'd like to have that sign encased with a brick flower bed around it, brick up the side. And then on top of it, I'll use the same terrazzo that I used on the front of the building. And I'd like for you to approve that. It, it is a little over, it's a little under 10 feet right now. By the time I get the flower bed there, I think I'll have it under the eight feet, so I will not worry about that. But I would like to be able to keep that sign with those changes, please. And all else, I agree to, of course.
Technical evaluation, 8.3 on non-accessory signs, says unless prohibited herein, or unless otherwise provided herein, non-accessory signs are specifically prohibited. You're not assigning any non-accessory signs, are you?
No, sir, none at all.
Can we change that verbiage and take out the unless otherwise provided herein?
Absolutely.
And just say, "Non-accessory signs are specifically prohibited"?
Please delete that. That'll be fine.
I would appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
And just as a...
I met with the neighbors. I met with the neighbors too, Mr. Gale. And by the way, we have deleted animal, animal care and animal boarding. We wouldn't do that anyway because it disturbed our multi-tenant usage. So they've asked us to do that, and we will. We'll have a gate in the fence so the church behind us can use our parking lot for overflow parking. I, eight or nine years ago, was, was instrumental in church acquiring five lots for expansion to the east of here because I thought it would approve the neighborhood, and so we retained a friendship there with that church.
Well, and Alinda Finley signed up to speak, possibly in support of your application, but I don't see her.
They, they were here earlier and talked to me, and then they left. They wanted to be sure that...
Malcolm, are you going to put EMD signs? Are you going to make this sign an electronic message display sign?
No, sir, I'm not.
Then, then, then that would be on TE number 8.1, that no EMD signs are permitted.
Where is that, Bob?
That's on, on 8.1. I think that's what, is that right?
It's actually part of TE 3.
Top of TE 7. Oh, pardon me, TE 3.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that, just no EMD signs are permitted.
Yeah, that's fine. It's just, it's just a small, little 24-square-foot sign that, that would identify the tenants of the building at all in amounts.
But not, this is, you know, flashing, you know, those kind of signs, that's an EMD sign.
Lighted.
Flashing, scrolling, all these things, you know.
No, it won't be...
Yeah, you're not doing that kind of sign. Then you agree to TE 3 changing, no EMD signs?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
As I drove this and looked at it, the, the uses that are immediately to the east and also those that are further to the east, which are virtually identical.
Yes.
Most of them have just very limited lettering for the individual businesses that are located with them. Other than your request to keep the pole sign that's there, you would anticipate, I assume, that the, that the signage pertaining to each use would be limited in a similar way.
Yes, it is. What we, what we have offered is, you'll notice there's some, there's a decorator there, there's an insurance adjuster, there's an insurance salesman, they're a bank supply company. They can put their name in that small, little space that's right under the terrazzo tile, but a lot of them don't do that. But that's, that's been available for them for identification.
And if there's not anybody who is, the other thing I wanted to ask you about, and I'm, I was a little bit surprised that this, that the staff didn't bring this up. It indicates in my staff report, I think, that you're actually going to adjoin the building that you erect to the building to the east.
Yes.
There's a little tiny bit of a cha, of a changing grade there. I guess you'll deal with that. And you have quite a bit of access to this property. Two large drives along Wilshire.
We do. Those are existing drives.
And then also one along whatever street that is. Is it Hudson? It's on, that runs north and south there.
We're going to do away with it. There's going to be no access on that north-south street, just from, just from Wilshire.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm with you. We don't want traffic going back to the residential.
I'm going to move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I have another comment about the signs.
With all those things?
You know, is it...
No, no EMDs. He's going to keep the existing sign. No, no non-accessory signs.
But on, but on the sign, man, I'd like to see a rendering submitted to the staff for your review in compliance with what it is that you said about the planter, about the materials that are going to cover the poles. You know, you're going to, you have to do a drawing before you put it together anyway. Somebody's going to have to...
I'd be glad to do that, sir.
So give it to the staff, and the staff could say, well, that complies with what he said. That's what I'd like to see, too.
Be happy to do that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve item 21, amending the sign discussion to eliminate EMD signs and delete the unless otherwise provided in the non-accessory sign. Cast your votes and you're approved, sir.
Thank you all very much. It's, it's no surprise to me that you guys are still overworked and underpaid, and it's nice to see you all.
They offered to double what we get.
Yeah, paid exactly what they're worth.
Now, wait a minute.
Item 22 is CE 809, application by Hartwig Investments to close portions of several streets in Ward 2.
So we don't want to carry the trees very far, is that it?
Because what?
We don't want to carry the trees very far. We just get close to campus?
We think we have a great spot for a cell tower, so we've got to make sure the streets are closed before we get in there. Now, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, we're asking to close portions of 57th, 58th, and Harvey. These streets have never been opened. Total environment is going to move a portion of their business to this site, and this will help us. He owns the whole thing. This will just help facilitate and bring everything into common ownership.
No one has signed up. We have a motion and a second to approve item 22. Cast your votes and it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 23 is ABC 740, an application by Pappy's Enterprises for an ABC 2, overlaying C3 at 1013 Southwest 89th Street, Ward 5.
Hi, my name is Cliff Childs. I'm opening a restaurant at 1013 Southwest 89th, hopefully in the next couple of months. I'm applying for an ABC overlay today, and I've got some menus here to hand out, if I may.
Here you go, Todd. It's your neighborhood.
Yeah, we just put the signs up last night. We plan on having, our signature items are going to be fresh, never frozen, handmade, old-fashioned hamburgers with fresh cut fries. Another item that's real, real popular right now is the street tacos. We'll have those on there. Will feature some grilled fish, chicken, and steaks. We'll have several salads, some in-house-made soups, mainly a seafood gumbo and a chicken yah-yah gumbo clam chowder. We will have some, some fried food. We're planning on having calamari and some coconut shrimp. And then two of my favorites are going to be the jambalaya and the jerk chicken Alfredo.
Okay, well, no one has signed up, commissioners?
I have a question. Why didn't they name it Cliff's Island Grill?
I'm sorry? Well, I, I...
Never mind. I may approve the application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 24. Cast your votes and you're approved. That's because if you don't like your burger, you can't find Bill.
We're hoping, we're hoping to try to open by the end of October. We're, if, it might be the first of November, but our plan is around the end of October.
Well, good luck.
Thank you much.
That was item 23. Item 24 is PC 10281, application by Carver Investments to rezone 1724 Northwest 1st Street from R2 to I2 in Ward 6.
David Lyde, Matrix Commercial Real Estate, representing the applicant. Property owner owns a property at 1740 West Main and is basically out of, out of space, just wants to build a office warehouse for overflow storage.
No one has signed up, commissioners?
I just have a question, and not that I'll oppose this because it is, it had a great deal of I-2 location, but why isn't this an SPUD so that we have control over of I2 location, but why isn't this an SPUD so that we have control over what it's made of, how it looks, what the, you know, the architecture, the landscaping is? That's just a rhetorical question of staff. Why not? Shouldn't it be? You know, I mean, this, you don't just have to, I don't know, you put a metal building up and have a riff on it and, you know, but this particular area where you are doesn't have to look like that. And so, not that I'll oppose it, but I'd just like to know what the consideration of the staff is by not doing an SPUD on an application with a rezoning from R2 to I2. It's a big jump. It's rhetorical.
Well, I'm gonna speak for staff before they do, I'm gonna venture a guess. My guess is if you look at the surrounding area, it is pretty much surrounded by a sea of straight I2 zoning. And if I were the applicant and I came in and staff told me, well, you need to do a PUD in the middle of this sea of I2, I think I would squabble. Now, I'm, again, I'm not-
Maybe they all won't squabble.
Well, maybe they won't.
But when they come in like this in these kind of areas, you have one thing that's improved, that they really do, they really try, you know, and I think that there's some examples on West Main Street. There's some businesses that have really tried to make that better. You know, there's an advertising agency and another, you know, the landscaping, the buildings look good and there's, you know, there's things going on. It makes the next person come up, say, well, why would I wanna make my place really lousy if I can have my property improved by those other people that have done these same things? This is the primary for that. So again, I don't oppose it, but I think that probably when they come in with something like this, have the conversation that you never had, you know, like they didn't say to you, well, why didn't you do, you know, why don't you consider this and that way we'll know what the building looks like, you know, the landscaping and a sidewalk, et cetera. At any rate, I move approval.
Motion and second, approve item 24, cast your votes and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 25 has been continued. Item 26 is ABC 744, an application by Delano Kemp for an ABC 2 overlaying C3 at 3925 North Lincoln Boulevard, Ward 7.
Did you ask me to come to my, okay. Let's answer any questions you want, if you wanna ask. Been in the community a long time, just moved across the street, wanted to bar and grill in. I'm applying for an ABC license for 3925 North Lincoln Boulevard.
And Elmer's already exists at that location, at this location, right? It's already there.
He's moving across the street.
Moving across the street to the east side of Lincoln?
He's going to the north. He's on the west side of Lincoln, moving to the-
To the east side. Okay, I know the place.
Just moving to the north, wasn't blocking.
Okay, got it.
I have a question for you. What type of food do you, what type of serve? I'm serving steak, chicken, catfish, shrimp, chicken salad, burgers.
You didn't bring your menu, did you?
I didn't. Could've bought one, but it-
Motion?
I make a motion to approve this application.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 26, cast your votes, you're approved, sir.
Thank you. Take your time.
Item 27 has been withdrawn. Item 28 is C 6301, final plat of Johnson Farms Edition Phase 2 in Ward 3.
Pat Garrett.
My name is Pat Garrett, 1705 East Tefner Road, Oklahoma City. The developer is GM Development Properties Group. We agree with all the technical evaluations except number three, we asked for a variance, 40 lots instead of 30 on a cul-de-sac.
Commissioners, discussion, no one signed up.
Pat, have you had any discussion with the fire department about the variant? And I noticed we did not have a representative fire today. Well, I guess they don't care, I'd move approval.
We leave the TE.
Move the variance on TE.
Okay. We have a motion and second to approve the variance to TE number three, cast your votes, that's approved.
Now I move the application.
Motion and second to approve item 28, cast your votes and you're approved. Thank you all.
Item 29 has been continued. Item 30 is C 6300, final plat of Rio Toscano Section 2 in Ward 5.
Good afternoon, Kendall Dole with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant, and we are in agreement with all staff TEs and would ask for your approval.
No one has signed up, commissioners?
Wait, I have a question. Are there sidewalks provided in this subdivision?
Yes. It's, we're hearing to all this, same as every other subdivision, yes.
Do we have a motion and a second, Booth?
Yes.
I missed it, sorry about that. Cast your votes and item 30 is approved, thank you.
Item 31 has been, oh, that's what we-
It's been continued, hasn't it?
Item 131 has been continued, item 32 has been withdrawn. Item 33 has been continued. Item 34 is BI 5803, an application by Blake Harper requesting a variance with the subdivision regs regarding a certificate of occupancy at 10713 Granada Drive in Rio de Bella, Ward 3. I believe he's not here.
And we just need a motion. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item 34, cast your votes and it's approved. Item 35 is continued, right?
You make a motion.
Say?
You wanna make a motion?
Well, Mr. Johnson wants to say something about it. Well, it's been a pleasure having you here this afternoon. Yes, we're gonna continue this, so we need, we voted to continue this earlier, did we not?
At the UDC?
Well, I thought we took it as a listed item.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
I think we talked about it back there, I don't know that-
Oh, I thought we, I thought we actually dealt with it out here.
I don't think we did.
Okay, all right. What's the pleasure of the commission then?
I'm gonna continue that for two weeks, that was the discussion. So we continue until 9/22.
Is that a motion, Mike?
Okay, if a motion is second to continue item 35 for two weeks, cast your votes, it's approved.
That's the public hearing items today, planning commission committees, planning commission members.
One thing real quick, Mr. Chairman, on signs and staff reports. The standard verbiage we're using in our TEs is that little preface phrase, unless otherwise provided herein. This is, you know, in the case of a non-accessory sign, non-accessory signs are prohibited. If they're not putting accessory signs in, they're not asking for non-accessory signs, can't we be more clear by just saying?
No.
Drop that phrase and just say, non-accessory signs are not permitted. And then the same thing on the EMDs, if they're coming in and they don't wanna, we ask them, do you want an EMD? And they say, no, don't put that verbiage in there. If EMDs are gonna be here, we want all this stuff, just say, there will be no EMD sign.
Right.
Can we do that? I don't know, that's a form of a question. But it seems to me it would be much-
The same question would relate to signage relating to the underlying zoning unless otherwise-
Yes, yes, we can do that, simplify.
Can I say, can I say something about that? With respect to the EMDs, I think that might be something that we wanna ask them rather than have the staff ask them. And then the staff report can change to reflect that between here and city council. And the reason why is because when the applicant comes in and the staff asks them, well, do you want an EMD? And they're like, what is that? And they explain to them what it is and it's, well, you know, maybe, who knows, I might. Whereas, when we have them here, we're in a little bit better position, I think, to accurately judge whether in fact they really need or want such a sign.
You could just prohibit it unless requested, you know, I mean, if they request it, then you put it in there.
I like that.
I like that.
I like that.
Well, more to the point.
And on the issue of Buck's comment about that other application, because we really did work at that as far as what the facades were, you know, how it's gonna look. Well, but this is, I mean, we might have screwed up, I'm not sure, but I think that we need to look at the application again, dust it off, compare it to what it is that they really did and see if they complied.
I recall that group and they were fairly compliant, they really tried to do right. I think they did, perhaps our view of the orientation did not capture exactly what we'd hope to, hope to capture, because that is, kinda sits out on that curve that goes around on, is that what you're talking about, being able to, Buck? When you go around the bend there on the Kilpatrick, and it's a pretty wide bit of frontage there, part of which is shielded by the trees. And the trees will grow up, I think, sooner or later. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I don't think those guys were particularly-
Yeah, I think our language, if we speak too visible from the roadway, I think that that kinda gives us a little better, you know, but that's kind of, you know, you gotta judge if it's visible and that type, but I think that's, that's our intent. Anything that's visible from the roadway should have a certain appearance and I think we need to look at that.
I have a-
Or use that type of language.
Separate, but related question, Lance. If you would check for me on the, whatever it is, the overall plan for Village Verde and look at the approvals that we gave to the mini storage or the storage units out there. Nick, I don't know what on earth we were thinking about, no, that wouldn't be, is that you, are you, you're not Surry Hills, are you? It'd be Nick. Nick, I don't know what we were thinking when we approved that mini storage thing out there in the Village Verde deal, you know, it was really the first piece of that thing to come through. It is awful. I mean, it's just nothing but metal buildings and bright green roofs, there's, there's no masonry anywhere to be seen, it's, it just sticks out like a sore thumb and I, as I drive by it and remember meeting with those guys, what I think to myself is, if this is their flagship, you know, this is the first thing they've built out here, it does not speak well for how that's gonna go. And I'm sure it came to us and I'm sure we, you know, voted on it and-
I went to my high school reunion in Alva this past weekend, I won't identify which one it is, it was a, it was a Biggie, you know, but, but I was with my friend from Baltimore, you know, we were driving back and just went, you know, right by there and I saw these buildings. Not once did I think, well, that's that Village Verde, that's that, that's that nice all color, let's put this together, not one time did I think, but I saw these metal buildings and I thought, wait a minute, this isn't right. I mean, listen, when you just said that, it's put two and two together.
I mean, they're neat.
Well, it may be another thing we need to look at, what we look, you know, for what we approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Which ones are you referring to? Which ones? I don't think Village Verde's done anything out there. I don't know that you're, that we're talking about, are you talking about a cross from Surry Hills? No, that's not part of-
On the north side, on the north side of, uh, the Northern Expressway.
Yeah, that's not Village Verde.
It's not?
No, I don't think so. I don't think they've done anything. Village Verde is at Mustang.
Comment of their development that was, is that they include mini storage and I remember that that was the first piece that they were developing together.
Well, it certainly would be inconsistent with what they presented to us in private meetings and what the, you know, what this, well, maybe it's, maybe it's not, Terry. Yeah.
No, I don't, I would agree with Terry, I don't think that's, I don't think that's Village Verde because one, I thought they were offset, one, that they were northwest, Northwest Expressway to start with.
Right.
It is.
Say, I didn't think they'd put a spade in the ground yet, but we'll take that up
later.
Yeah, let's see what it says.
Mr. Chairman.
They're not developing that. They're not to the building stage yet, I don't believe. If, I know they're not to the stage of having things-
I don't think they are either. I mean, that's why it's surprising, 'cause I saw those metal buildings, I thought, well, that's really ugly.
Hey, James, do you have something?
Do we move forward on something to deal with this cell phone? Cell tower, some type of moratorium? What is our next step with that? Do the staff, do the staff do something to help us with moving to their next step with it?
I think I need to have a discussion on what, you know, what the specific issues are. I mean, you heard several different scenarios today with different issues associated, some of them overlapping, that perhaps we can identify some of those and then bring that to a study session for discussion.
Okay.
Well, what's becoming very apparent is, while we took a run at this about 10 years ago and, well, it became current, I don't believe we're current anymore. We probably need to revisit.
We haven't had one for a while, but I remember the last ones we had, we had, I mean, there were issues associated with them as well in terms of separation and proximity.
Yeah, as James says, we're probably a little behind the curve and we probably do need to do some catching up.
Okay, planning department.
Bob, did you get your issue addressed?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I will, we'll have a study session next time, we'll bring back vacant abandoned properties and we'll bring back the ordinance that we had in 35 as well, so subdivision regs, so, go from there.
Development services. Municipal council is gone, citizens to be heard. You're here to talk to us?
Yes, sir. David Wells, I'm 4030 Fontana Drive in Oklahoma City and more than being a citizen here in Oklahoma City, I'm also the senior site acquisition manager for Goodman Networks, we represent AT&amp;T Mobility. Didn't have a lot of success today, but that's okay, we roll with the punches. Talking about the moratorium, that's really why I wanted to stay and speak, was, Mr. Gales, you did a great job 10 years ago. I really think it was very forward-thinking and I think the evidence for that is the fact that, I can tell you, in the 18 months I've been with AT&amp;T, we have done 60 sites in the Oklahoma City metro area. We brought five of them to zoning. Guys, I can't quantify the amount of work that we've done to find good sites. I mean, we have four meetings a week, I work months, 20 hours a day for months on end. We have vetted out these sites, they are very good sites, they fit within the use of the property and they might not be popular, but they certainly are good sites. I can't quantify to you guys what we have done to bring these sites to you, I can tell you, we've worked very hard, we've looked for every solution and we do that on every site we do in this city. That's really all I wanted to say, was that the ordinance is good, to go into a moratorium is a significant impact on our business and we certainly understand that you guys have your objectives to you, but I will say you have a good ordinance in place, I think there's a way we could figure out to work together better. I think there would be an opportunity to, you know, kinda hear our side of the things. You're hearing a lot of, you know, facts from these protesters that are very unsubstantiated and very much, some of them not true. But, you know, that's just what I wanna say, I think you guys have a good ordinance, we have done a very good job of bringing you good sites. I understand you guys don't like them and that's fine, but they do fit within the characteristics of the existing use of the property and be it, they may not be popular with you or the public, they do fit with the existing use on the property.
Well, we appreciate you staying and talking to us, I don't see a moratorium as a prospect. I do think that any discussion that we have will once again include the industry as we did last time. In other words, the ordinance that you see in place now is something that we spent a lot of time on, working with the industry, and it is, Nick, I guess, about 10 years ago that we did it.
Yes. It really is.
Well, it was right at 10 years ago and it was a concerted effort with, not just, AT&amp;T wasn't here at that time, it had another name, but all the players, all the-
the industry folks were involved, and we changed our ordinance significantly. As the guy making your applications pointed out, you're very successful now at finding sites because of those ordinance changes, and that's what it was intended to do. The reason I made the comment I did was twofold. One, it's become apparent that maybe 10 years is too long for our ordinance, and we probably need to revisit that ordinance. To do that, as the chairman pointed out, will be an involved deal, and it will certainly involve all of the players and the stakeholders. The other reason I made the comment was, he was frustrated, and I understand his frustration, but he made the point, "Well, for the record, I want you all to, to acknowledge you're going against your ordinance." Well, I'll tell you, I don't believe we did go against our ordinance. I believe what you guys did, and to your credit, I'm not criticizing this, but what you did is you very carefully sought out postage stamp areas, i.e. the health club at the old folks home, and said, "Ah, I can stick a cell tower there." That really is not within the intent of, of the ordinance. Had it been, you'd have put a 50-footer there, okay? And, you know, that's why that, that's, that statement made is, and, and he came up with me afterwards, and, and now he understands where, where I was coming.
Mark's certainly a passionate person. It's good and sometimes it's bad. I think we all kind of know how passionate people are. You know, I will say this, Mr. Gales, that I answer to the vice president of AT&amp;T Southwest Region. That is the most important site in our network right now. We have more drop calls, we have more data traffic in that area, and, again, it's a cell, you're coming in to do an infield. Of all, I mean, I can't make those open parcels, lease land to. I can call them all day long. I can send them letters. I can go by and try and find somebody, if they don't want to lease me land, I can't get land. But I could get land here, and I can masquerade, I can stealth attack. And I don't, you know, some things that went on in the, in the presentation, quietly with you guys, I don't think I was real happy with. However, I can tell you, that, that is absolutely the best site in that area. And, and you're right, there is a challenge now. The data, the iPhone, the iPad, the Android phones, it's a game changer, you know, especially in the residential areas. Because what you have, rather than somebody traveling along the road, handing off, handing off, handing off, you have 1,000 kids sitting there like Ron said, listening to Lady Gaga. I do, I do, yes, I do, all the time. You know, and I sit there and squat on that network, and it's, it's a big deal on, you know, when it comes to call blocking and data and data traffic. Anyways, I think it's a great ordinance, I really do, and I do commend you. I'm not just saying that, because there are a lot of good opportunities to find permitted by ride, as well as co-location, rooftop, et cetera, stealth, whatever the case is. It is a challenge these days, and, you know, there are all going to be some times when we've got to provide service to these guys, and it's going to be in a residential area. And that's what I'm trying to say, is, I mean, that Baptist side up on 50th, there is nowhere else to put that town. I can promise you. I mean, I've looked to that side every way, we've talked to just about anybody we can. If I can't get somebody to lease me property, they're not going to lease me property. So, thank you for your opportunity to speak with you guys, I do appreciate it, and...
Well, thank you again for staying and talking to us.
Yes, sir. Thank you.